I'd like to.
You're being recorded.
All right, first off, welcome people to our meeting. This is the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and the time is six P M. We're going to start this meeting tonight with a work session in which we'll hear from the Taffey County Fire District as well as the Buena Vista Police Department. Kira, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, um, well, I realize I haven't been here since March. Um, so it says first quarter, it's like first quarter plus recap for the report that you guys were given. Um, spoke today with Annie Carlstrom for Fourth of July. It feels like it's, it's like still April and here we are talking about Fourth of July already. Um, so there's been some adjustments from our standpoint in terms of what fireworks and who's handling fireworks. Um, but we're still doing our best to work with the American Legion and their wishes and desires to remain in charge of it. Um, while setting some healthy boundaries for us about what we will or will not participate in. Um, so we'll still be there. Our intention so far, we have a meeting tomorrow with Lane, I believe, is the gentleman who's in charge of it now with the American Legion, Sons of the Legion, um, to just make sure that we're all on the same page. But, um, I don't know what the fire forecast is going to look like in a month. Um, working pretty hard with, um, partnership with Andy, Sheriff Forrick and, um, Chief Aaron Johnkey, Salida Fire, South Arc Fire Chief, and then Chris Nocorato. I don't know how many of you guys know NOC. Um, but to make sure that the fire restrictions for the valley floor are appropriate. Sheriff Forrick is much more conservative than Sheriff Speasey was. And then he's much more amenable to having conversations with the fire districts across the board, whether it's Forest Service, um, us, Salida Fire, uh, about what conditions are and what some of the perceived threats are to be able to put in fire restrictions, um, moving forward. Um, one thing, working with Marika and her team, they've been great. Um, there's a lot of commercial development that I'm sure that you guys are all know and remember. Um, today was an alarm acceptance at the Buena Vista. One of the things that came out of that, um, was some questions with the state of Colorado, who is in charge of the suppression system. So they oversee and manage all sprinkler systems in the state of Colorado. And so they're the ones who do the plan reviews, the inspections, all those things. Um, start from where it taps in, um, from the main all the way through the building. Um, one of the issues that they had today was in regards to pressure, um, at that. And I said, I'm not surprised. Um, I will get more information from the state to provide it to you guys. Um, it's potentially something that the board needs to think about moving forward with development, about what the water pressure is like. Um, I don't do the reviews for the sprinkler systems. Um, and so it depends on the type of building, um, how many sprinklers are in there. Um, they have to do the water calculations about what's required for the system that they submit. Um, but there is some possibility that water pressure is going to potentially be a concern moving forward. Um, there's also been some conversations that Marika and I have had about the highway. I don't know how many people pay attention to hydrants. I unfortunately do now, um, and what side of the highway hydrants are on. But there's not hardly any hydrants the north side of town on the west side of the highway. So if we get a commercial occupancy on the highway that has a major structure fire, there's a potential that we're shutting down the highway because I can't have people driving over my hose and the hydrants are on the other side. Um, as well as there's some older occupancies, um, we were dealing with, um, what is, I can't remember that address, Gifford Duff's, uh, BB Automotive, the old BB Automotive building. There's some creative plating, um, in places and access points that caused me a little bit of concern, um, that Marika and I have talked about, um, moving forward to just have, be on her radar for any development in that area of town. Um, moving forward for access. Um, the railroad, yes, that property, like people drive on it. Technically, there's a two-track, but it's not access that we can guarantee. And somebody can do whatever they want to within their boundaries, obviously within the town limits, but that could ultimately affect our access. So, um, the request would be to continue to have some conversations with Marika and her team and be involved, um, when it comes to the planning of access and what the requirements are for the fire code, um, to make sure that we can still meet our minimum needs as well as be involved in what the town, town's desire is for that kind of thing moving forward. Um, since we are changing an S O G for Swift Water and now that we have a river park, um, it's going to require us to get some additional certifications. Um, we're not engaging in, um, rescue operations in terms of in the river at this time. Um, but looking at a three-year plan for us to start looking at being able to engage with that a little bit more, um, especially as some incidents happen right here in the River Park. Search and Rescue is a valuable asset and they do great work. Um, we're able to respond a little bit quicker than they are. And so to be able to provide that support to them, um, and the community on the river is pretty important to us. Airport Advisory Board, um, attended their meeting, had some great conversation, um, with Dan and Jack. Um, Dan has forwarded their proposed rules and regulations over to us for review. Um, I'm doing my best to try to get that reviewed for them to then have them be able to present that to you guys at the June meeting. I don't know exactly what date that is and I should figure that out. But, um, so, uh, we're working on trying to work on some training collaboration with them that fits with our calendar. Um, but also they know what to expect from us, we know what to expect from them. Um, and setting again some just ground rules and boundaries about what can happen and what we don't have the training and capacity for. Um, so Andrew was at the meeting and I think it went really well. It was nice to meet everybody, so. Um, Destination Storytime for us is one of our favorites. Um, the library came and visited two Fridays ago. Uh, we had hopes to have a little bit of a warmer day to be able to do a little bit of watering with the kids. Uh, that didn't happen, but we were doing a physical agility test, so they got to see what we have to do, put on the gear. Um, there's usually about sixty people that come to the fire station for that. So, um, it's a great time and we're really glad to have that opportunity to work with the, the library. So, um, between our two new inspectors, Rachel and Alex, we are almost caught up with inspections. They've been working really hard, um, to try to get all the commercial occupancies that were missed, um, in that break beginning of the year, um, so that they're all up to date. We try not to schedule a lot of commercial occupancies, especially in the summer, just respecting people's flow of business. It's really kind of cumbersome to be like, hey, can you take half an hour, fifteen, twenty minutes out of your day to walk with us? Um, it just doesn't make sense when we have time throughout the year to be able to do that. Um, moving forward, uh, we're planning pretty heavily to support the concerts at the Meadows while not diminishing our capacity throughout the district. So what that means is that our presence at the concerts, um, is going to be minimal, um, but still there to be able to take care of, uh, a response if it's needed during the busier times to support both the ambulance, um, needs for extraction or anything like that, as well as coverage twenty-four hours. So there won't be, um, there'll still be plenty of staffing for the county and the town, um, in case something happens. We're not committing everything there. We do plan on having a healthy wildland dispatch, um, year. I'm not sure how many people remember what that looks like. Um, but we will be staffing one, uh, type six, which is the basically the dual pickup truck, um, and one tactical tender. We will only be doing those two pieces of apparatus. That still leaves the district as a whole with five type sixes and, uh, two type sevens, which is a little bit smaller water capacity and one tactical tender, but still three other structure tenders. Um, so we're not leaving the county or the town, um, in a compromised position. Um, but we do anticipate trying to send them out as much as possible, uh, to be able to look for that, um, equipment rental back from the state of Colorado. Um, somewhere's here. Hey. Um, yeah, that's all that I have. Do you guys have any questions or?
When you're talking about the water pressure in the, uh, sprinklers, is that an issue of the code or is it an issue of our water pressure in the lines?
Um, it depends on how it's designed. So in theory, like people design it like this is what's required for this building alone. Um, and so they have requirements for what size needs to come off of the main. Um, and then there's residual pressure that's required to be able to support that, um, initial action. How it would work is that it opens up one, not all the sprinklers go off, just the one sprinkler that's broken goes off. Um, when we would then respond, we support that, um, through pumping from our trucks, but we also hit a hydrant. And so that's two, two taps off of the Buena Vista municipal water supply right off the bat for, um, us, a commercial occupancy. It just depends on how big the fire is and how big the occupancy is, um, as to how much draw there is, um, on the system. So for that particular occupancy, this day is going to have to come back and flow a hydrant at the same time as that, um, sprinkler system is, is tested to make sure that it's going to have enough pressure to support the sprinklers that are installed.
So was the initial, like, test, you think it may not, or?
Um, it didn't, it didn't pass today when he was here. Um, it didn't have enough, it didn't have enough pressure, um, to be able to put out the required flow of that sprinkler, um, if it were to be activated. I, I don't know if when they were here doing like, they go through a process. So they're like, they do an underground, they do hydrostatic test, um, they do a series of tests leading up to it. And so I don't know if maybe today was like a day that everyone was doing laundry or something, I don't know, um, versus like when they were here doing the test. And so they're going to come back on Thursday. Um, I gave them Joe Pedri's information to make sure that they reach out to him, um, to have that conversation about, hey, hey, we're going to be flowing a hydrant at the same time as we're turning on. It's, it's a drain valve, um, for the system so that there's going to be, um, a hit to the system. And so making sure to have that conversation with.
Cause I was, you know, not far away is the Surf Hotel and I assume they had a very similar test and they must have.
Well, and so the surf went in, how many years ago?
Four, five years ago.
Yeah, and so the, the, the tests that occurred at that time were on a different loaded system than the test that is. And that's, that's all that I'm, that's all that I just want to put out there is that, yes, some of these larger occupancies were put in, but they were under a different system with a different load request.
Right.
And so I know that Joe and his team work, um, to the best as they can to make sure that they're testing the hydrants. There's been some problems, um, with some of the developments with people hitting hydrants, which has caused them to not be able to, um, like, that's like they have to order the hydrant, they have to replace it. And that takes time out of their schedule to make sure that they have, um, hydrants that are functional, um, throughout the, this short window of season that they can test those things because they obviously can't do it in the winter time. Um, but yeah, they, they try to test them, but there's a lot of hydrants that I would guarantee you with the other things that they have. They don't, they probably don't have the time, um, or staffing to be able to do it annually, um, to make sure that they have like what the gallons per minute are for each hydrant throughout town.
Yeah.
It should be higher down here because it's lower than almost everything else. But for some reason today, it didn't have enough pressure to support the system.
Interesting. Um, you were talking about the hydrants north of town. Is that after Crossman or before or including?
It is right around Crossman. Um, so yes, the, the line does switch, um, because there are hydrants on Harrison, but there's a huge gap between Harrison and Crossman where there are no hydrants there. Um, but like, um, the Super Eight doesn't have a, they're like the high, uh, high country bank, all the hydrants are on the east side of.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, we're expecting to put in the crossing and then theoretically another supermarket, so.
Right, and so the crossing, um, the crossing has hydrants, um, laid out per the code for residential. Um, what was communicated to the commercial occupancy that's looking to be in that space is they have, the size of the, the structure that they're asking for, um, requires a significant amount of water for two, two hours, I think, two. It, it was crazy. Um, Joe was sitting across the table from me and was like, what? Um, because they have to have suppression and then they also have to have, I think it's thirteen, thirteen fifty, uh, thirteen hundred fifty gallons a minute for two hours. It's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Um, and so I don't, what I had communicated was to that development was I don't know if the crossings' infrastructure that they put in will support that demand. Um, but, but that's information that we communicate to the developer. Um, but I mean, I mean, if you really want to know about fire code, I'm happy to like, do the best that I can. But, um, it's, it's, it's a challenge, Amber.
You call that, that, uh, flow requirement is in addition to the sprinkler requirement?
Yes.
So it's thirteen fifty plus the sprinklers?
Correct.
It's still, and I think thirteen fifty sounds a little low.
Thirteen fifty is the reduced rate because it is a fully suppressed building.
But you, but you still have the suppression flow?
Yes.
Every sprinkler on?
Correct.
It's a big.
Yes. Yes. It's a lot.
It's L O W, that's a lot of water.
Mm-hmm. It's a lot. Um, and so like I said, I like, as things develop and change and get bigger and taller, um, there's some additional requirements that I think you guys need to just maybe keep in the back of your mind and be aware of. I mean, Marika is pretty familiar with it, um, and her team's doing a really great job. Um, but I mean, everything goes up, uh, around here because we can't go out for the most part.
Has that kind of testing been done on the Boulders? As the Boulders is probably one of our more dense properties.
Um, so the Boulders is one of the places that, um, Joe and his team have had problems with, um, hydrants getting knocked over. Um, so I don't know if Joe has done, uh, hydrant testing flow at that particular place. Um, because they're the ones that manage it, they know when they're on and when they're off of water. And so we try not to flow them without having a conversation with them. Um, like that sort of testing, it's not like a, you have to turn two hydrants on and flow from two hydrants simultaneously for, it's about like, ah, about like two to five minutes, um, on average. And so it's, it's not an insignificant amount of water to be able to test those. But I don't know that Joe has, but I know that he has had to replace three, at least three hydrants that have been hit by contractors in that development.
So something that'll help with kind of especially subdivisions, residential, um, even starting the conversation with commercial type businesses is the hydraulic modeling system. And so historically, they used to require hydraulic model, but on a spot, you know, area. So if you're just looking at one isolated section, so by putting the whole system into, uh, the system or the model, basically when another subdivision is proposed, especially on outskirts of town and different locations, um, you can run that model and see kind of how it reacts and different hydrants and their fire flows and stuff like that. And so it is true, I mean, this same development here won't necessarily have the same impact as a development on the north side where the west side cuts pressure.
Sounds to vary on what they can meet and demand. So that money that we spent this last year to put together at least the start and the bones of a hydraulic model will help carry these conversations in the future.
Is that the model that's being developed by the county?
No, this is.
This is ours?
This is ours that we worked through in twenty twenty-four. It has been finalized. It's something that you can spend a lot of time and money to really calibrate and get it to be an exact science. But we have the whole model put together and it's ready to be tested and if and when a subdivision or proposal comes through. Um, so we have that for as we move into the future.
Mm-hmm.
As far as breaking the hydrants, they have a breakaway.
Yes. Their themselves, yeah, they're, so like the, they're not like flowing water, but they do definitely like have to get a new hydrant. Um, and so I believe that Joe is incurring those costs to the contractor, um, every time that he has to replace those. Cause I was like, man, that's no insignificant amount of money. Um, and so I know that he has been billing them.
Chris.
Is there a timeline to determine if there's going to be countywide fire restrictions this summer? Or are you guys just kind of playing it by ear?
Uh, so we get a weekly report from, uh, the Forest Service. They do fuel model sampling, um, basically from turquoise lake all the way down, um, to half, halfway through the canyon. So there's a wide variety. It's not just high, high elevation. Um, and so they, they do the fuel model sampling, they send out the predictions, um, they send out their recommendations. Um, and then we just kind of go from there. As things start to dry out and the, basically the country becomes a little bit more volatile and the, they raise the preparedness level, um, that's when like NOC will start saying that not every like three days, um, or as appropriate. And then, then we just kind of try to judge and gauge, I mean, knowing like what season, like, hey, we're going into like the Fourth of July weekend or Labor Day, something when there's going to be a lot of dispersed camping, a lot of tourists, a lot of people in town. Um, those are definitely all factors that play into it too.
We'll be checking the district's website for the most up to date on that.
Um, so we will, I mean, I can definitely let, um, Brian know when, when we go into restrictions, we do put like it's a big obnoxious red banner that goes across ours. I know the sheriff's department does too. The town, um, the town ordinance that we worked, uh, amending, the town automatically follows the burn restrictions for the county. Um, and you actually have more restrictive burn ordinance than the county itself does. So, um, yeah, usually all of us, and I think on the website it does say like, it references and links our website on the website for.
What do you do at reverse nine one one through Everbridge, do you know?
Uh, we have not done that in the past ever. Um, I don't know that it's something that's not out of the question, uh, for Andy to do because, yeah, it, people start to get nervous and I, I understandably so. Um, but yeah, no, I can definitely ask Andy if that's something that he wants to do. Um, they're the ones who own that system, um, not us. So he would have to be in support of that first.
Any other questions for Kira?
Thank you. I know I promised pictures, but they had like children's faces in it and I was like, probably shouldn't do that. But I have some pictures.
Hey, Chief Morgan, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. If you mind if I drive you out?
I definitely would appreciate you driving. Yeah. So yeah, class line, yeah.
I know, I looked at it and was like, oh my gosh.
I don't point to you, you're going to have to scroll with the.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. I'll, uh, I'm going to go through a lot of these slides really quickly because, um, I want to leave some time for some questions at the end. So let's see. Well, these are the staffing levels of the Buena Vista Police Department currently. Um, I'll mention this later on, but we, the last couple of years, we typically, typically been operating about, um, two people down a year. Um, when we lose an officer, uh, if we hire somebody who's not post-certified, we have to put them through an academy. Um, that's usually a six-month or about a five-months process and then fourteen weeks of field training. Um, we lost two officers this year, one moved to Arkansas and the other one went to the district attorney's office. And we'll meet Brandon Langford later tonight, who, um, just graduated the academy two weeks ago. And, um, we're going to be sending, um, one of our new co-enforcements, Anita, to the academy, um, that starts in August. Um, so we also have one that's going to be on light duty. So throughout the summer, um, it's going to be pretty tight for us because Langford, he'll probably be on, um, training through August. Um, here's our vision and mission statement. You can go to our website if you'd like to read more about that. Um, there's a link to our Facebook, Instagram and our webpage. Um, and you can always email myself or the officers if you have questions. Um, we have some really cool technology and equipment and some really cool training. I might be nice to talk about that, but I think there's some other things that might be what you guys are more interested in. So I'm going to try to focus on that. So if you do want to know more about our, um, training and equipment and policies and any of that stuff, we do have a ride-along program. Ride-alongs are free. Uh, feel free to stop by the police department anytime and we can give you a tour. And if you're interested in doing a ride-along, um, they'll sit with our officers, get to know them and, um, they'll be able to show you some of the equipment things we have. Um, training, I want to talk about that real quick because that takes so much of our time. Um, we, uh, for a brand new officer who's not post-certified, uh, we usually send them to a police academy. One of the challenges is there are no local police academies. So, um, we have to send them usually to the front range, which then creates an issue of them having to find housing. Um, an average academy is about twelve thousand dollars. Um, and Governor Polis had passed the Career Advanced Colorado. And the reason there's a line to that is because that, um, funding is used up. So right now, um, when I'm sending officers to the academy, I get a grant through post. Um, and then we also budget for, we have to send another officer through. And then after the academy, they do about fourteen weeks of field training. Some of the training mandates are important. Um, we do get a lot of calls from citizens for responsiveness to different things like, hey, how come your officers aren't doing speed enforcement here, people are always running the stop sign and then just general calls for service. I, I think it's a good reminder just to recognize a lot of the training mandates, which are important for professional standards for police officers. Um, those are some of the annual mandates and it seems like every year there's new bills being passed that put more mandates on us. Um, last year they added missing and murdered indigenous relatives training and their interactions with persons with disabilities. Super valuable, super important to our officers, but it also takes them off the street. Um, and for a small department, that can be a heavy lift. Um, these are other trainings. We do all kinds of trainings throughout the year. Um, we're part of the Central Mountain Training Region and they offer a lot of real high-quality trainings, um, for free. With our new facility and the training room, we're able to host a lot of trainings too, which means we're not happy to send officers out of town. That was a class that Sergeant Mitchell scheduled earlier this year, the, um, Advanced Roadside Investigations Driving Enforcement. So what that stands for, the Colorado State Patrol taught us. And we had several other agencies come and attend that too. Um, one of the mandated trainings, it's called the skills, is, uh, we have to do firearms. We have to shoot throughout the year. We have to do cold weather shoots, mic shoots. Um, arrest control is, um, part of our skill set. Got a lot of different tools for arrest control, baton, taser, pepper spray. Um, and then driving, we have to do driving training. Um, other trainings we do throughout the year, we do our active killer response in the schools. We do a lot of that at the schools at the beginning of the year with the teachers. And then over the summer, when there aren't students there, we do a lot of what's called reality-based training where we use simulated firearms. And, um, that's from a drill we did a couple of years ago where we had a lot of the different shape agencies come and help us. Um, every fifteen minutes is another one we do for the students and the staff. We do this one about every three years. It's a great one because the fire department gets to come out and do reality-based training. You can see them there cutting the roof off a car on a mock traffic accident. Um, the hospital, the courts, the district attorney, the jail, they all come out to help and do a mock DUI accident forum, teaching kids about the dangers of drinking and driving. Um, we do a lot of activities in the community, a lot of community policing. I'll go through these real quick. These are just some of the things we do, coffee with the cop. Um, we usually advertise that on social media, have people come and consent and have coffee with us and ask us any questions they want. Um, we also enjoy, um, Destination Storytime. Um, that's from last year and then I think this October they're coming back. And we love, um, giving the kids a tour of the station and reading stories to them. Um, big ones that's, um, really positive in the community, um, Salida P D organizes shop with the cop. And we get the names of kids or families in the school that might have special needs around Christmas time. And, um, started a radio campaign. So last year, I think each kid, um, had about two hundred fifty dollars we were able to spend on them. And we take them to the stores and shops down there, we take them out for coffee and things like that. And, um, maybe not the little kids for coffee, but the ice cream shops down there. And, um, it's really positive, they get to buy drinks for their families and things like that and ride around in the police car and use the radio. Uh, tip of cops, another one we do that raises money for Special Olympics. Uh, tip of cops, another one we do that raises money for Special Olympics. Um, that's Melissa. She's our, um, one of our records clerks. She's an evidence technician and she also is our public information officer. So we try to be very upfront with our, um, information to the community and connecting and communicating with the community. Supporting our schools, I always say the probably most populated neighborhood in town during the school year is the school. That's where you have your largest, largest concentration of people and it keeps us busy. I think about twenty percent of our calls for service on day shift are generated at the school. Lisa Yates, um, the superintendent, um, works really closely with us. We meet with the principals once a month. Um, we do a lot of different activities for the school. Um, we've made with some of the special needs classes and let them get into patrol cars and, and learn to interact with police officers. Um, that's the training we did with the I Love You Guys Foundation, which developed the standard response protocol. We invited them up and, um, so we trained all the teachers on that. A lot of the churches and security teams attend that. We do our crime scene classes with the forensics class. Back to school night's a big one where we interact with all the parents and students. And you can see the posters there for the standard response protocol that explain the, you know, what a lockdown is, what a secure is, what, um, a shelter in place and a lot of information on that. And then the school is really good to train with us and drill with that throughout the year. Um, we do a lot of parades and escorts for the school, the bike to school day, um, when they go to state championships, we usually escort them out of town. Halloween parade's a big one, homecoming. Um, special events, um, I think twenty twenty-five, I think this number's changed a couple of times, but we're averaging about a hundred twenty special events a year. There's examples of some of them. The biggest ones are definitely, uh, fourth of July and, um, the community dinner, but you can see some of the other ones there. And again, these kind of, you know, kind of like Kira was talking about, if you're gonna sponsor or help with like big events at the meadow, you also have to think that you don't diminish your police services or first responder services to the other residents in the community. And when you're short staffed and short officers, it, again, it's a big lift for a lot of increase in visitors to our town. And the more visitors that come, the more police issues that come from that. Uh, like I mentioned, the community dinner, that slide is just representative of the amount of officers it takes. I think the tables are running four deep now, so it's gotten a lot bigger. That's an early year, but you can see how we're trying to position police at all the access points and, and have a presence. So there are more and more special events that are a big task on police where that's like, hey, nobody gets a day off this day. Everybody has to be there because not only do we want to keep the event safe, but we still have to respond to calls for service. Um, our equipment and technology, like I said, um, you can join us on a ride along or ask me questions about that if, if you want, but one of the more prominent pieces of equipment that's in the news a lot is body cameras, which we all wear. Um, House Bill two seventeen required, um, police to collect data when we initiate a contact and then we have to send that to the Department of Justice. So we're using that, um, it's called Citizen Contact by Smart Force and the officers can just pull that up on their phone. And they can click an icon and it'll just take them through a series of questions to collect the demographics. Um, it also tracks where the officer is. Um, it has a digital business card we can provide. So we use tools like that. This last couple of years especially, we've really had to lean on language learning. As we've had a lot more encounters with non-English speaking people. And again, that's an app. You can pull it up on the phone and just click the language you want and there's an interpreter there within a couple of minutes. Actually more like a few seconds. Um, we're also part of the combined tactical team with the Chaffey County Sheriff's Office, um, the co-response program. I won't read the slide to you, but basically the Behavioral Health Administration was funding that and they're not doing that anymore. So they're saying local entities need to fund the co-response program. So, um, I think is, I understand that the co-responder in the area, Sarah, um, has been made an employee now at the sheriff's office and the sheriff's office is doing the initial lift. But when we do budget and things like that ourselves and Salida PD, we are going to be asking for money to support the co-response because it's not just a function of the sheriff. We use Sarah all the time. And those were some statistics she provided for the co-response calls that she's been to. Um, those are specific to Bena Vista, that's countywide, but we rely on Sarah a lot. Uh, some of these guys were on a call earlier today where, uh, a young person was feeling suicidal and Sarah responded from Salida. Um, it's a huge resource and it's something we definitely, I hope the town will be able to provide some funding toward that. This is our calls for service. I noticed the typo on this slide. So in twenty twenty-three, we had five thousand sixty-one calls for service. This number here was supposed to be down there. So in twenty twenty-four, we had seven thousand one hundred eighty-six. Forty-two percent increase so far for twenty twenty-five. That's this number here. We're at two thousand three hundred forty as of May twelfth. So calls for service are going up. Oops, went the wrong way. Um, these are just some random, um, types of, um, calls that I pulled the data for. So these are actual case reports the officer took. So in twenty twenty-three, we had seven hundred one case reports. These are examples of some of those case reports. These numbers are not going to total that seven hundred one. I just pulled some examples of different things. Um, you can see how crashes keep us pretty busy. Um, twenty twenty-four, we had one thousand one hundred ninety-six case reports, which was about a seventy percent increase from the previous year. And so far we're at a hundred forty-six case reports for twenty twenty-five. And there's some examples of the types of, um, calls and things. Um, DUIs. This is a pretty concerning number to me, whereas in twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-nine DUIs. In twenty twenty-four, we had sixty-two. Um, so far we're at seven. I think over the weekend, we probably added a couple more to that. Um, so that's a hundred thirteen percent increase. Um, there's a lot of liquor establishments in town, um, and all of the liquor licenses, um, I think they all come across my desk. It seems like we're adding more and more. But with that, we, uh, I think we have to weigh the balance of how that can create, um, impaired drivers on the roadways. We've gotten some pushback because we haven't forced this aggressively and our officers are going to continue to do so because it's one of the more dangerous crimes out there. One of the, uh, statewide statistics is from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, DUI fatalities actually went down. And they think part of that is due to, um, um, impaired driving campaigns, um, like the one sponsored by C-Dot. So I get a grant every year for the, um, high visibility enforcement campaign. And what that does is basically C-Dot pays an officer overtime to come out specifically target DUIs, which is that high visibility. And we have gotten some complaints from citizens saying that's, you know, officers are stopping cars left and right and you know, we try to be strategic about that and connecting with the citizens, but at the same time, when you see DUI numbers going up so high, um, that's super concerning. So it's, it would be very hard for me to tell my officers to not continue pursuing DUIs. And there's an easy solution to stopping DUIs and stop drinking and drive. So um, the public needs to partner with, uh, with us on that too, as do the businesses, because we have a lot of concerns about what we're serving alcohol as well. There's some data on code enforcement. We have two code enforcement officers now, but we're losing Anita in August to the academy, which we're excited about so machine. Personal super kids and these are just some numbers generated, um, for types of contacts he's had. Um, I know Anita was out last weekend, uh, pretty aggressive down on Front Loop, trying to close the no parking down there. Those are some grants I've gotten over the last couple of years. I'm a couple I'm waiting to hear on this year. I did apply for the Meridian barricades, which is about a hundred thirty thousand dollar grant. We're going to front a little bit of money if they offer it to us. A hundred seven thousand plus those nice barricades to protect some of our special. And then, um, the academy grant for Anita's police academy. Um, just some challenges. I'll go through these slides. Um, these didn't change from last year too much. But recruitment and retention has been huge. It's a huge challenge for police departments across the country. Um, a lot of people have seen the news. They see how easy it is for cops to be sued. They don't want to be police officers. Or sometimes the pay isn't considered with the, the liability and danger. There's some information, um, nationally. Um, another pretty concerning thing to me is some of the statistics about, um, small town police officers. Um, there's been a forty-five percent increase from twenty-two to twenty-three on rural officers being assaulted and injured. Um, it was fifty-six percent in twenty twenty-three of all police officers in the country. So attacks on rural police officers are becoming more prominent. Um, some specifics to the state of Colorado. Um, again, you know, taking qualified immunity from officers. Um, training mandates where it's putting officers in the training or the classroom more than it is on the street. Um, specific to Bena Vista, um, one of the problems here, I think we're all aware of, and I've been in many of the meetings where it's discussed, it's housing. Um, I've heard a lot of promises from builders, developers that all this is going to be for the teachers and the cops. And then once the price tag comes out, it's like, it's not for us, is it? A lot of us make too much money to qualify for, um, some of these low income or what are they calling it now? The attainable housing. Um, and apparently that's calculated off of if you're a dual income. I think most officers are dual income, either have a spouse or a roommate, um, just to afford to live here. Um, pay is something that we definitely want to look at for the department. We're the lowest paid department in the county. Um, there's the starting for the sheriff's office, um, Salida, and then we're, um, coming in at the bottom. Um, police officers are asked to do a lot. They have to respond to various calls and traumatizing calls. They have, um, increased scrutiny with all the data we have to keep. We're on body camera, everything you do. Um, so there's a lot, a lot of. For a pay and housing disparity, if we're trying to attract people to come to Bena Vista or our police department. As an example, um, average housing in Colorado Springs was listed at four hundred fifty thousand. And they're starting their offices at thirty-four sixty-six per hour. Whereas RealEager.com listed, they called it medium listing home price in Bena Vista was seven seventy-five thou- seven hundred seventy-five thousand. We're starting our offices at thirty-two. Not like I said, there's more demands on officers' times, um, have a high for keeping the officers we have. Uh, Megan and Shane, my commander, we did a breakdown of how much it costs to train an officer. Um, which I'll get to that slide in a minute. But what we need, we, we need more officers on the street. Um, there's some data that shows the growth in Chaffey County. Data USA showed Bena Vista was averaging a two point five to two point seven percent annual. And we have to remember that we're not serving, when the census says the town population's like twenty-eight hundred, we're not servicing just twenty-eight hundred. We're also providing services to all the citizens in the county that come in and use the restaurants and the grocery stores. And then obviously in the summer, you can see as this slide demonstrates how our calls for service almost doubled. Um, so we're twice as busy, if not three or four times busier in the summer. So we're providing services to all the officers that come into town too. And you can see that creates a pretty big, you know, February is about four hundred and you're looking at August and you're over eight hundred. So it's, it's very challenging, especially when we're short, short staffed. Um, the effects of short staffing, things that really concern me is officer burnout. Um, in two thousand and four, we spent eight thousand hours overtime, strains the officer's health, um, effectiveness, mental wellness and family life. Um, I've been talking to a group called Sigma Tactical, um, that provides some great resources for officers, but as you can see there, officer's life expectancy when they hit retirement is way, way lower than the average citizen. And not sure where that is, but I think it, a lot of it does have to do with the demands of the job. There's some other facts related to, um, you know, just being a police officer, this comes from status code for counseling in Colorado Springs. Um, fifty thousand officers in Colorado, um, thirty percent experience post-traumatic stress, thirty percent depression, thirty-five percent experience substance use disorder, seventy-five percent experience divorce, which is a really, really depressing statistic. And then the number that it's cited over the years. Um, ninety percent of departments have less than eight thousand five hundred budgeted for mental wellness training. So that's something we've worked on and we're always trying to build on, but again, it's a different type of profession and, and I do think, I guess one of the points I want to make is that I, I hope that our pay um, and then commitment to, um, staffing, um, kind of helps address that. Officers get sick, we go on vacation, we have to go to, um, trainings to maintain skill set. Um, when this happens, the department is short staffed. Um, when officers move on out of the departments, agencies, the department is short staffed. So we've just been living under that umbrella for a while. And, um, yeah, we need enough officers to have at least two officers per shift. That, talking with my supervisors, there's many, many times, and I'll show you a schedule here in a minute, that we only have one officer working. Um, and part of it's because sometimes they're at training, sometimes they're on vacation. We have an officer on maternity leave a big portion of this year. It's dangerous to the officer and it's dangerous to the citizens when we only have one guy out there. We have really good relationships with the sheriff's office and state patrol and they're always backing us up and vice versa. There have been times it's been really crazy on the south end and most of the deputies are down there, so they might only have one guy up here. Um, but when you have, um, you don't have enough officers on the street, um, it can lead to more assaults against officers as we're seeing with the data nationally. And it can also lead to officers having to use higher levels of force because they're out there by themselves. This is the slide I mentioned about cost saving. Um, roughly it takes about eighty-five thousand to get a new officer trained up and on the street. And when within a year or so, they go to another department for better pay or something where they realize, hey, I can't afford to live here. Um, that's a big investment that we're losing. So I think investing more in the officers will help us, um, with retention. And then you get a bigger bang for your buck from that. So that's what our current schedule looks like. So that's something you can maybe look at in your package later, just to give an idea. But Commander Garcia does the scheduling and sometimes he works magic to get some of the shifts covered. When you see things like this for Flores, the T, that means she's at training. Um, you see some vacations in here. Um, when this officer was at vacation, this officer is working weekend nights, five P to three A by himself in the middle of summer. It's not, not a good situation. So this is a proposed schedule that Commander Garcia developed. And, um, it shows how adding just one officer, uh, and I think we need to add more than one or if we could add maybe one or two a year moving forward, I think it's really going to help us. So when you do have those vacations or training or a sick officer, we can move people around a little bit. So there's at least two officers on per shift. That's all I've got. So I've left a few minutes for questions if there are any. I gotta grab my water.
Uh, Chief, I have a, a question about, uh, you, you mentioned that the DUI is up a lot. Do you think that has to do with there being zero, uh, after hours transportation in town? Because I know we had for a long time, Kareem did a lot to help people, but I don't think there's really any people filling the void, is there or?
There are not. I sat down with, uh, two business owners and they brought that up.
Yeah.
So that's the biggest thing is if people want to go out and drink, they have to do it responsibly.
Right.
And we say have a plan, which is usually a designated driver.
Right.
And Kareem was busy all the time. So.
All the time, yeah.
Yeah, like a taxi service, Ubers or something that could help.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I was thinking about that. I'm like, well, there's nowhere for people to go home and then, you know, obviously you shouldn't be providing, but it'd be better if we had someone around to help with that. I agree. Um, with your co-response, I noticed that county is hiring for a few positions to that. Do you envision that they would be taking that over completely and then using them here as well? Or would it just be for them?
Um, so I think it's, um, talking to Sarah, she believes and I agree with her that at the state level, it will probably be mandated that every agency has some type of co-response plan. But, um, the county seems to have deeper pockets. So I think Andy, Sheriff Rourke stepped up to the plate. Because she was being funded with a grant that was about five hundred thousand that fell through. I'm not sure why, but I, I do hope to bring her to one of these meetings and we can talk specifically about co-response so we can strategize. But that grant fell through, so I think he's funding her as an employee. But Salida Police and Bena Vista use her a lot as well. So just like dispatch or, or other resources, I think there's going to come a time where we need to provide something back to that program if we're utilizing it as a resource.
Yeah, cause that was all done through Soul Vista, so that's completely out of Soul Vista's realm now.
Um, I'll have Sarah speak to that, but when I asked Andy this morning, he said that he did hire Sarah as their co-responder, so. Um, I'll have Sarah speak to that, but when I asked Andy this morning, he said that he did hire Sarah as their co-responder, so.
Yeah, so do you envision us paying into that? Or do you think it would be more beneficial to have a co-response person on staff at your department?
Um, I think we'd look at the balance of do we need more officers or more co responders? And Sarah would probably be one of the first to tell you that the calls for service for BV probably wouldn't warrant a full-time co-responder. But if we have a joint relationship with the county. Um. And the different things we're looking at, like this year, we're looking at offering her an office in our building. Where I say, hey, if co-response is on the north end, you can come into our building, you have this office space. I think Salida had talked about offering a, uh, a car that she would have to travel around. So I think strategizing and coming up with some things like that. And then if Andy says, you know, hey, this is how much we need to pay her every year. Um, could BV or Salida chip in ten percent or whatever it might be and having those discussions.
Right. Yeah, just let us know. I think that's an awesome program and we've seen it be used more and more of the years. And Sarah's an awesome resource. I've spoke with her many times over the years.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we get into budget season, it might be worth talking about that for two thousand and twenty-six and maybe having Sarah come in and just briefly talk about the program. And because that's probably something I'll talk to Andy about the sheriff and say, hey, what can we do to help support this program next year? And what might I need to budget for on our end?
Yeah, it sounds like there's some figuring out to do.
Yeah.
Before everyone starts working on their budgets.
Yeah. Cool.
I was wondering if, if, um, if we've looked at our car policy recently in terms of, you know, whether the number of, um, miles that we allow on a car before we, before we think it needs to be retired or moved on to a lesser department. Um, or, you know, is it length, is it months or is it, um, number of miles? Do we look at that?
We, we do. I think the policy was seventy-five thousand, which we've been pretty good about maintaining that. And then Shane and I both been creative about finding some ways like this last year, we had a patrol car budgeted. Um, a brand new one, and then the DA's office was actually selling their old investigator's patrol car, which had like sixty thousand on it, but in really good condition. So we ended up picking that up for, for a steal. And, um, so I could see your point though, we do look at the mileage and, you know, when we need to mile them out. If they are our chariots to, to get us to the call, so we do want them in, you know, tip-top condition. There's a couple that are getting there.
Are there trustee questions?
Uh, so you, you talked about having a seventy percent increase and I don't know what you. Wrote it exactly, um, in calls? Yeah, it was in C R's. And I was looking at the statistics from twenty-four to twenty-three, and it looks like the biggest increase is total citations, which is up by like two hundred twenty. Um, why do you think that is? Is it just giving people more tickets for speeding or is it a lot of variety of things?
Um, yeah, I'd say the, um, the C R's is like case reports, so that was a total increase in case reports. So when you get those monthly, um, cheese reports with the data, um, those are listing all the different calls for service. And then when we pull a case number, that's something separate. So the increase in citations, I think partly it's just that it feels like there's more traffic. And that's also a lot of times responsive to citizen requests. And then, um, when there's traffic accidents and things, there's always a citation usually for the person at fault. It's pretty standard, so that's part of it. Um, part of it, I, I just think, um, town's getting busier. And, and the other thing too, I think a couple of years ago, we were better staffed than we were. So when there's more officers, um, able to hit the streets harder, there's more productivity too.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, you know, you know, we definitely want people to not speed, so.
Yeah, we, we hear about.
I guess you know, oh, I know you do.
It's, it's a balance too, because sometimes people are like, you guys have nothing better to do? And then other people are like, why don't you guys have any of this? Try it.
Yeah, I got pulled over after a meeting on Main Street. Yeah, you don't speed.
What else at the police station working out?
It's working out great. Yeah, we, uh, like I said, I showed on the slides there, we're using the training room quite a bit. And, um, other agencies are coming in and we get a lot of compliments about it. And, um, you know, we have a lot of interactions with the public there. We have to do interview things when, you know, something bad happens. Um, so it's very nice for that and the officers, you guys like it?
Well, that's.
And can you get out through that Baylor intersection okay, or does that sometimes give you problems?
It gives us problems and Kira might have some input on that too. Um, but with the stoplight, it's been pretty nice when you're at the light, but if you're waiting to turn, um, especially during school, coming in or going out of session, it'll back up. Um, you guys had a call the other day, a stove on fire and, um, there was about five or six cars backed up on, uh, Baylor that the big engine had to go around. And I'd noticed if you're going southbound, um, and at the stoplight is like a box truck. It's super dangerous to try to pull across that intersection because you can't see cars turning off the highway. So I've got some concerns and I think the heavier traffic is, the more we're going to see there.
I'm the second house in on Baylor.
Okay.
And sometimes I have to wait one while to back out of my driveway.
To get out of there.
Traffic does back up. Yeah.
Is that new with the light or has that always been the case?
It's new with the light because traffic backs up more with the light when otherwise people would just be going.
They're waiting to turn left. And the light's there now, so people are waiting to turn left and so to be like, no left turns in the summer.
Check.
Um, I mean, yeah, Dean's right, especially at school, school drop-off and pickup is like, oh, Lord.
Yeah, that's fun.
Hmm.
Are you, Chief, you talked about, a lot about mental health for your, um, officers and how there's definitely like a lot of stresses. And I was curious if you have any like mental health requirements for like therapy and check-ins with your officers? Are they getting enough support that they need? And, you know, with benefits and whatnot, I assume there's benefits in the health insurance for mental health? And just making sure those kind of things are supported and.
We do. That's one of the benefits of a small department is we can kind of buddy check each other. And a part of it is officers needing to come forward though, which sometimes there's a hesitancy to do, to ask for help. Um, but usually we can tell if something's wrong with one of our buddies or they've been on a, on a rough call where, um, we check in on them. And we do have a wellness policy. Um, the biggest thing we're doing right now is providing resources. So, um, the town has been super good saying, hey, if officers, I think any town employee needs to talk to somebody about something or struggling with something. The town pays for a certain number of sessions. And then on the front range, um, we have, um, two, um, volunteer groups, a status code for counseling is one of them out of the Springs. That's run by retired, uh, first responders. Um, so we can put officers in touch with resources like that. We have used the Nicoletian Associates, which is a group that specializes in police psychology for fitness for duty. Um, when there's been an issue like that. And then, um, we also started, um, a couple of years ago, a chaplain program. So we do have a police chap, chaplain. Um, he's a volunteer, he's part of the Rocky Mountain Police and Fire Chaplains Associations. And he's gone to some trainings and has told us that his role is to be there to support the officers. So we do have, there are some resources, you bet.
Well, let us know if you need more.
Okay. You bet. We need boots on the street right now. Anything else? Thank you. Come do some ride-alongs.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
I did one with Vince Sergeant Morgan.
Okay, um, push ahead or take a break? Good.
Quick break.
Quick break. Are you ready, Brian?
Ready.
Okay. Come. This meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Beena Vista, Colorado. It is May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is seven oh five. Um. Please silence your cell phones.
Yeah.
I'm with you and, um, Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Your penny.
Here.
Trusty hike.
Here.
Trusty rose.
Trusty rose and hour.
Here.
Trusty rose.
Here.
Trusty stern.
Here.
Trusty swisher.
Here. Uh, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustees, you have before you, um, an agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor Faye, we have the oath of office first.
Of course we do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is going to be an oath of office for Police Officer Brandon Langford. This is a very important part of our meeting.
I know it's a busy meeting, so we will make it brief, but this is one of the new officers that's going to be helping us on the street, Brandon Langford. He had, uh, nine years at Department of Corrections and then completed the academy mid-May and graduated, what, two weeks ago?
Yes, two weeks ago.
All right, and his girlfriend Samantha's here and I will have her pin the badge on after I read a, uh, a quick, um, statement. Um, congratulations on your recent graduation from the Pike's Peak Regional Law Enforcement Academy. As you join the ranks of law enforcement with the men and women of the Beena Vista Police Department. Know that you bear responsibility for helping to keep our community safe, to help those in need, that you may be called on to run toward danger. Acting as that thin blue line that places you in harm in order to keep our citizens from harm. Know that with service of this nature, there is often an emotional cost on officers and their families. For these reasons, law enforcement is an honorable profession and you have answered, answered a noble call to service and sacrifice. I am encouraged that your family was at your graduation to support you, that your girlfriend is here with you tonight. Police families see firsthand what this job can do to an officer over the years, and they are our strongest allies and support. Take care of them and love them and not let the stress of the talks steal your joy with them. This badge is a symbol of the ideals of fidelity, strength and honor. It is a sacred trust given to you not just by me, but by the citizens of Beena Vista. There's a foundation of trust between the citizens of Beena Vista and the BVPD. And as a new officer, you must be a keeper of this trust. This trust is part of a legacy built by former BVPD officers and leaders, as well as the current members of the BVPD. This trust is bound to your duties referenced in our mission statement. To ceaselessly pursue criminals, suppress and prevent crime, apprehend offenders, protect lives and property and maintain order. Our mandate is to do so by being fair, firm and impartial, to always speak truth and to act with faith, strength and honor. With the presentation of this badge, I charge you to keep the faith. That is to serve our citizens with courage and honor, to hold sacred the trust and authority given to you by the citizens. To be mindful of the legacy built by those who came before you and to be firm yet fair in the administration of your duties as a police officer in the Town of Beena Vista.
Hi, Brandon Langford.
Hi, Brandon Langford.
Do you swear by the ever-living God?
I swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances of the Town of Beena Vista.
The ordinance of the Town of Beena Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Police Officer. And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
The Office of Officer, Police Officer.
Which are about to enter to the best of my ability.
To the, which I'm about to enter to the. To the, which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, trustees, you have before you a proposed agenda for this evening's meeting. Please let me know if you have any modifications to be made to the agenda. Hearing none, would someone make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Okay, so we have Hyde and Swisher, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And then we have the consent agenda, which has minutes from some advisory boards, as well as our most recent Board of Trustees meeting, and reports from the Town Administrator, Treasurer, and Airport Manager. Are there any items in the consent agenda that you would like to see pulled out as business items? Okay, hearing none. The Recreation Director, too, is on the reports. But is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
So we have Swisher and Rowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Trustee Rice is going to bring the clipboard for public comment. We have just one person signed up, Mary Therese Anstey, who is with Historic Preservation Commission.
Correct. I'm in 819 South Gunnison. Have to do that?
Two.
So I am here at the tail end of May, which was Historic Preservation Month. And each year during the four years that we've celebrated Historic Preservation Month, we have done a community coloring contest for children from birth to, it's, ages have varied. This year it was about birth to 13. The 19 brave souls who entered the contest, their entries are on the wall over there. I have brought you materials to vote for your favorite, all done by a public vote. Each person should take three stickers that are going to be on the honor system, and you will pick by number, blind voting, and you will find the number and put your sticker next to the one you like. If you like one a whole lot, you can use three stickers on one, you can use the stickers any way you want. The green, the orange, and the pink have no significance, those just happen to be the colors that were at the Family Doll. So, but no, it's been a great contest. We are looking at perhaps, even though May is nationally when Historic Preservation Month is celebrated, May is one of the busiest times of any of the year for students and teachers and that kind of thing, and folks we depend on to do colorings. So we are thinking about perhaps being different, just like we pronounce the name of our town differently. Perhaps we will do Historic Preservation Month at a different time of the year, but that is yet to be determined. The grand prize winner gets the very most votes, and then each first place winner in each age division, these are mostly kindergartners and middle school kids that you're seeing up here, they will get a framed copy of the winning entry, an ice cream cone from Louise, and a book token from Once Upon a Trapeze, and all those things will be mailed to their home because kids love to receive mail. Thank you for being big supporters at Historic Preservation Month, and I'm going to give Marika the stuff, and you just vote as and when you have time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment, unless there's anyone online.
Was that, is this the only period for public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Like to make a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, may I get you to sign the clipboard here, please? Public comment is limited to three minutes. Was there anybody else who wanted to make a public comment but didn't get the clipboard?
Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, Orion Lane, 428 Reynolds Avenue.
Thank you.
All right.
Just go ahead.
I represent Reach Air Med. You guys probably know us as Reach and Salida, and we actually do a lot of municipal benefits for a lot of municipalities in the area. I think the only place we don't have is probably 100 miles away, and then BB, and I was notified about that. We have 12 medical air bases in the state of Colorado, including Del Norte, fixed wing plane, Alamosa fixed wing plane and rotor, as well as the Reach base, and about nine more all over the state. And I understand that the Town of BB, or the municipal employees, are currently going with a third party out of Florida. And we'd love to get the opportunity to present more information on how the products differentiate, and how we pay co-pays and all that, and also how our programs extend to the whole family of the employee instead of just the employee. A big one for me, I can only speak for myself, I've been a member for three years. I have Blue Cross National Shield, I have a very, very debilitatingly high deductible, and my program as a Reach member, as an Air Medicare Network member, will cover that entire copay when I'm flown. We do about a flight a day out of Arkansas Valley. Every 3.8 minutes, somebody meets one of our paramedics, whether or not they know it's coming or not, and we're huge. We're 342 of air bases around the country, we have international programs, and we're continuing to grow. It's kind of a makes sense, no-brainer for local municipalities within driving distance of an airbase to roll with us. Car the Rockies Hospital, every single employee is underneath us, and if they believe in us, you should go talk to them or talk to some paramedics, and then figure out, announce the both of it, but I'm here, you all probably knew Cara Riano, she did this for eight years prior to me, and you haven't seen me much because I've been trying to shore up Alamosa. Currently, we have 38% whopping percent of Chaffey County residents are our members, which is, we're really grateful for that, and we want to continue to up that number. Every number we fly is a non-flight bill scenario compared to somebody who doesn't have us and then get that surprise bill. So this membership we offer is great for municipal situations, and it's great, risk spreading, you can think of it like a supplemental program. Thanks for having me.
Great, thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. And now we would like to welcome our auditor, who will present his findings on the audit, and then we will be given the opportunity to accept the audit.
Evening.
Hi.
My name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle &amp; Company CPAs, and we did perform the annual audit of the financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2024. We first start off our audit by updating our understanding of the town's internal accounting controls, those policies and procedures that cover cash disbursements, payroll, cash receipts, various cycles within the accounting department. We're looking for a segregation of duties, and that is where a transaction takes three steps, initiation, approval, and recording in the books and records, and we do not want one person to do all three of those steps within each of the various different cycles. Once we finish our documentation throughout the audit, we are verifying that those policies and procedures and internal controls are operating as intended and that they can be relied upon. We do that for a couple of reasons. The first is we are looking for what we call significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls. And a significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an air to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that could result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our analysis and all of our audit work, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That is the answer that you want to hear. The other reason we do that is to assess the part risk. That helps us in planning our audit procedures and tests. We primarily use what we call substantive procedures, which are test of details and analytic review. Test of details is just pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances, and we look at the underlying transactions, and we verify those with supporting documentation such as invoices, cash receipts, agreements, contracts, et cetera, to ensure that the accounting is following general accepted accounting principles. We also use analytic review, or we compare the current year to the prior year, the current year to budget, various ratios within the financial statements, and we're looking for relationships that we either can't explain or don't expect. And if we find any of those, we do more test of details. The end result of that is the audit opinion. Yours is technically called an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion, states that the financial statements are in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. That's also the answer that you want to hear. You did spend more than $750,000 in federal grant expenditures, which brings you into what's called a single audit. The reason for that name, interestingly enough, was back before 1984. Every government agency that sent out grant funds would send their auditors out to test compliance with their programs. And so large cities and organizations would have auditors out all year long. Congress passed the Single Audit Act, where the external auditors, us, would test compliance with federal grant awards when we do the external audits. You have two grants. We tested the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. We issued two opinions with respect to the single audit. The first is in reference to government auditing standards, and that looks at the town as a whole and basically asks the question, does the town have the internal controls in place to determine what federal programs it receives money for and what the compliance requirements are, regardless of the size of the grant? And then if we find any instances of non-compliance in any federal award program, we're required to disclose it. That opinion is also an unmodified or clean opinion, that you do have the internal controls to know what federal grants you receive. Sometimes a little difficult when it passes through the state, they're not always great at communicating some of that information, but you do have that. This, the third report, and the second within the single audits is called "In Compliance with Uniform Guidance", and that's where we select what's determined to be a major program, and we test that in great specificity. We sample test the expenses, we look at every grant compliance requirement to verify compliance with that grant. And then if we have any non-compliance with that grant, we disclose it in that report. And that one also is an unmodified or clean opinion, that you do have the internal controls to ensure compliance with that grant, and that we found no instances of non-compliance with that grant as well. So all three audit opinions are clean opinions, and we have no findings or question costs with any of the federal grant programs. We also issue a letter, a required communication letter, that is us required to communicate in writing as certain events occur in the course of the audit, whether we had any disagreements with management, whether we had any difficulties in the audit, whether we had any corrected or uncorrected errors in the books and records that we had to make, and we have nothing to report negative in that letter, so that's a clean letter as well. I have to compliment Philip and the accounting staff. It is clear when we come to an organization where financial reporting is a top priority. The books get closed, clean, we get in, we get out, and I will report that you all are my first Board of Trustee presentation for the 1231 cycle. That tells you how high of a priority financial reporting is with the Town of Buna Vista. So thank you, Philip, and all of your staff for helping us get through this process. There is two things about the financial statements I would like to just bring to your brief attention. One is if you dig down deep into the financial statements and read the footnotes, you'll notice that the FPPA, the Fire Police Pension Association, typically had two different disclosures. The defined benefit plan and the hybrid plan were separate disclosures. For whatever reason, this year, the actuaries combined those into one conglomerate report. And so this year, there's only one disclosure covering all of it in one group, and the required supplemental information has that separated out. So where that's always been, two different disclosures in the past, they've now been combined into one, and that's as a result of the actuary report that was issued as of 1231-23. The other is, as you work through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund grant and finish that up, the federal government has raised the threshold for single audits going forward from $750,000 to $1 million. Not a huge step, but for smaller organizations that kind of flirt with that bar, if you will, that might keep you out of the single audit requirement, once we get through that large grant. So we may not have to perform a single audit in the coming years with that threshold moving up. All in all, it went well. Philip and his staff is very responsive to all of our questions. We are a, is addition to his daily job and his staff's daily job, but they were very quick with responding to our questions and requests for documents. Our staff auditor, Wade Fisher, who's been with me for 18 years, came out and actually did a portion of the audit on-site to be able to make sure all their questions got answered timely. So all in all, a very good report. Any questions?
I just had a question on page 103 of our packet. There are a couple of journal entries.
Yes.
And I was just wondering why those are in there.
That is in response to the required communication letter. Turn to those, click. The, the first one is simply to set up a loan receivable for the water loan that we have, and a forgiveness of debt. We had a renegotiation, if you will, of that debt, and it changed the book value of the loan on the renegotiation, and we helped through that journal entry. That was not a normal cash receipts, cash disbursement journal transaction. And then the second one basically was with respect to that same transaction, where you obtained the water rights on the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy, and we helped with that non-routine transaction.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Go on. Well, thank you very much. I'm going to have a little bit of time for me to make my presentation. I appreciate it very much. I just would like to remind the trustees, technically, the external auditors work for you all. We work with management, but we work for the trustees. So if you ever have any questions at all about the audit process, you're always welcome to reach out to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we can accept the audit. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the 2024 audit report and financial statements?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Well, and do you want to be second, Stern? Rowan Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes, the audit is accepted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, Mr. Wiles. I think we are to the airport discussion. I think we are to the airport discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and trustees. For, I have two resolutions, resolution number 37 and resolution number 38. Resolution 37 is combine both FAA and CDOT Division of Aeronautics, their grant funding into one resolution number 37. And which this, this particular one is just saying that we are willing as a town opposing to accept the funds that FAA will give us for the 2025 North April Construction Project. And subsequent paragraphs will be for CDOT. So, FAA, this year, the year 2025, they, early in the year, they went from a 90 to a 95%, which though cover the cost of the project, which means CDOT and us as local have to match a 2.5%. In previous years, it's been 5% our match. So, that's good news. So, what 30, resolution 37, we're just asking that we, as the town, will accept the funding from both FAA and CDOT and the criteria that comes with it. Basically, the verbiage is as long as we, we use the funding for actual the project, I will be, you know, managing project and the town will, is obligated to provide the 2.5% match. So, that's what this particular resolution is about. I don't know, Brian, if, if the actual diagram got put in at the bottom of the memo. Yeah, that diagram. That's on what, 184? Yeah, that, I don't, well, that's kind of small. But anyway, that's, that's the project. Maybe you can zoom in, gives you an idea. Yeah, that, hopefully, we can see that. So, if you look straight in the center, that big, yeah, that rectangle center, that's kind of, that's our hangar where our terminal is. And if you go to the right of that, those are the tie, or correction, the left, those are the tie-down areas, which we completed that area of the April in 2023. So, now, we're moving to the north or to the left. And all that hash marked area and all that area in, up by where our fuel island and right over to where our snow removal equipment building is, that is the pavement that we will be working on this for 2025 this summer. So, that's the scope of this project. So, it sort of ties into 2023 and moves and finishes it off. Last year, in 2024, we finished the design phase for this. So, that is all, that's basically, we closed it out and I'm just finalizing the, the final invoicing of that. And we'll be recouping funds from both FAA and CDOT for our final drawdown of '24. And then today, we're, you know, depending on the outcome of the resolution today, we will move into the 2025 project. So, that's what we're asking on this particular resolution, number 37, just to accept the FAA grant and the criteria that go along with it, if you have any questions.
And do we, do we feel secure in getting that money from the federal government, from the FAA?
Yeah, so far, it's, we've been told it's, it's coming through with the actual agreement. The application, I think I was here maybe a month or so back to the application that we approved that and went back. So, the agreement came in maybe a week or so back. So, they have confirmed that they're going to fund this. I do have, I will get into a little more detail on the funding on the next phase of 37. But, so for this, they, all indications are, everything is a go for FAA and, and CDOT to fund the project.
Anybody have more questions for Jack? And would you recommend that we pass 37 before talking about 38?
Yes.
All right, I'm making a motion to pass resolution number 37.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Rowan and Mike. Okay, is there further discussion about resolution number 37? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. So, I mean, in the past, we've come, you know, to the board many times with, you know, the resolution for the FAA and then the CDOT and then the service agreement with Dibble and then the contract agreement with the, with the actual construction contractor. So, this is why we combined, trying to shorten the cycle route. So, resolution number 38 focuses on the project, but it'll focus on, we're requesting that we take on Dibble as our service agreement with Dibble to manage the project. And in the same resolution that we, so Dibble will be the consultant for the project and the contractor will be Pyramid. And we're asking that in this resolution that we accept both their contracts to, to one, Dibble to manage the project and two, Pyramid to actually execute the reconstruction phase of this project, which is a lot of mostly baby. And here's where I want to explain a little bit. And so, in the resolution, at the beginning of the year or towards the end of last, we, we approved a budget of $666,000 for this project. And then with all the funding that the FAA will give us and the matches, it comes out to $585,000. So, it's under what we approved. However, is, and this is on me, because we had discussed this with FAA, like, when all this, you know, transpired, they were a little bit, we weren't sure, you know, what was going on with the government. So, we got her, we, FAA said, yep, we'll fund it through the BIL. It's not a grant like the normal grant. It's, we're using the rest of our bilateral infrastructure fund to do this project. So, it is going to be a bit short, $585,000 total. All the grants will be a bit short because Dibble's cost will be, and it's in the report and I'll just summarize it, it's $182,000 and change. And Pyramid is $411,000 and change, which brings us out to somewhere around $594,000. So, we're about $9,500 over for the project. Now, having said that, we did approve $666,000, but we have been in contact with FAA when this started. And this is, this is where it's on me. We had talked about this a couple of months back and I completely, when I wrote all this up, forgot. But FAA is willing to make us whole at the end of the project. That we might, we'll get our funding through the project as we do it for '25 and '26. What, if there is a delta balance, they're willing to make whole and do a separate grant. The reason they wanted to do it that way, they didn't want to have two separate grants going for the same project, especially like a, like a half a million dollar grant and then like a $10,000 grant. They just didn't want to do it that way. So, they want to push, if we come in under, then no harm, no foul, they're going to. But if we end up needing that extra $9,000, FAA has said they are willing to make us whole and do that project. I do have Dibble online here, Mario from Dibble. Might be able to put a little more jargon on that and better understanding. I don't know if I'm articulating it quite well, but Mario, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, you, you did a great job, Jack, and thank you, Mayor, and the board. I'll just add to what, what Jack's saying and make one, one minor correction. It won't actually be a separate grant at the end of the project. It'll actually just be an amended amount. So, they will take a little bit of value that's already part of the entitlement for this airport, for your airport, for the, as part of the bill program. And so, that's a good, good word. We always love to hear the word entitlement, right? That means money that is dedicated to your airport, allocated, guaranteed, of course, with, with strings attached, of course. We never know nowadays, but it is money that is set aside for Buena Vista. And that is, that is going to be money that you can spend at your airport. So, really, we're just pulling a little bit of money out of that pot to be able to finish, finish out the funding needed for this project. The airport unfortunately actually fell in category this year. And what that did is it actually lowered the amount of funding that the airport, or, yeah, that the airport received from the FAA in this program. And so, that, that's a little bit of the history, a little bit of the, the conundrum of, of why we're kind of dealing with this, this funding, this funding a little bit retroactively. So, you will see that if you, you do the simple math, the, the grant amounts and then the local match will not directly align with those two contract amounts. But by the end of the project, and it's really, we're expecting it in early 2026. At that time, the FAA will have that money programmed and ready to be transferred into that grant. And then we'll have an amended grant amount at the end of the project that'll make, make the project whole. So, I think that, that covers it, Jack.
Yeah, thank you, Mario. And we, along with Dibble, will, you know, keep an eye on the project and anywhere we can sort of save some money, we will, you know. If there's any other question, I certainly will entertain that.
So, do refresh my memory, did this go through our standard RFP process?
Yes. Yeah, so all that bidding process, it was, you know, through the papers and all that. We had, we ended up having two, caught two bids that came in. Pyramid was the lower of the bid. And it's going to work out quite well because they are doing a project in Slida at the same time. So, they're able to combine rather than have two separate deployments into the valley. They'll be here. So, this is why we're able to capitalize and take advantage of Pyramid and their expertise because they're actually going to be here for two projects.
Other questions for?
I don't know if I understood correctly or not that Mario had mentioned our airport fell in category. What does that mean?
So, we are a, just a general aviation. So, as, as airports get larger, you go from like, say, just a local to a, to a hub, to regional. And then, you know, eventually you get to DIA International. So, we went for, we, we fell in a bit of category because you've got to track aircraft. How many, it's kind of based on how many base aircraft we have.
Okay.
So, we've had a few aircraft leave, someone go, and we were caught in between the, the updates where some left. And, and somewhere in the back office of the FAA, they go in and count and go, okay. And we were in that transition where some were coming, some were going. We're well above what we, we actually have more airplanes at the base, base aircraft now than we had in previous years. But that one epoch of time sort of caught us out. So, we're back on track. So, we're going to be bumped back up next year or when they revise the status. But it did drop our, our funding down just a slight bit.
Well, thank you, that makes sense, yeah.
Andrew, you have any questions as part of the Airport Advisory Board? Everybody good? Okay. So, I think we have a motion on the table. So, all in favor?
Who made the motion?
We didn't do a motion.
We don't have a motion yet? All right.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay, so good. Okay, Swisher and Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you, thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate it and we will make sure we do our due diligence on the project.
Great. Now, we're going to talk about the Pocket Wave, Pocket Wave 2.0. Earl, are you addressing this?
I think Shane is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and we can go to Earl if we have any questions. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Yeah, we have on the agenda a resolution 39 to approve the construction contract for the Pocket Wave remodel. Some quick history that I went into in the packet. The Pocket Wave was constructed in 2014, but it is, hasn't been performing how we wanted for a little bit of time. We were all set to go on the project in 2023, had the agreement with Lowry, who has constructed every wave in our whitewater park here in BV as well as Salida. And unfortunately, we weren't able to complete the project in the, in that timeframe due to extra water being moved in the river and being unable to physically get in the water and do the construction at that time. And then we were getting lined up to tackle the project again last year. And in that time, between 2023 and 2024, our engineering and design company, Recreation Engineering and Planning, also had the experience of the Scout Wave. And so, we, our design was modified and the contractor was unable to complete the project under the, the agreement with the modifications to the design. So, we're back here again. We have all of the funds for the projects needed in the budget. And the contractor is ready and available to work. Our Recreation Engineering and Planning is still, we are still under agreement with them to perform construction period services during the construction. And we are also looking, you know, it's tough to forecast the river flow in August right now and it's the end of May. But as of right now, for selfishly, we're, we're looking pretty good, you know. The rafting industry might not have the, you know, the same opinion of how the river flows are looking. But as, as of right now, we're trending in the right direction to where we should be able to get in the water and complete the project this fall as planned. The design has been, you know, revised and REP has also completed a similar project with a similar design to our wave in Buffalo since, you know, we tried to start our project. The entire construction agreement is in the, is in the packet and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Chris.
Shane, in the memo, it says no longer functions as originally designed. Does that mean that the wave degraded over time or the uses or desired uses have changed?
That's a great question.
Yeah, so in 2014, when it was originally designed, that area, when they built it, just wasn't getting the hydraulic performance that we were desiring. And to go and modify it would have been pretty expensive. So, we didn't have the funds to do so. So, right now, the way it stands is the same as 2014. The wave only breaks at above 2,000 CFS. Seen really high water and it only gave us about two, max three weeks a year of recreational use since 2014. So, we've been saving our pennies and dimes since then to redo it. And it's taken us a long time to get there financially.
Is it the same company that's designed this time that designed it last time?
Yes, but a lot has changed over the past 10 years with whitewater park designs. In the old days, it was putting in rocks, granite rocks at certain angles and you'd estimate what the right angles were to be and you would ground them. And now, the low-flow area, which is the center of the feature, is an actual engineered concrete structure. So, it's a lot more scientific and specific estimated for it. They did. When whitewater parks first started in the early 2000s, 2018, let me try to change, you know, got to more engineered designs.
Oh, there it is, one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment to add on it. I'm a day late and a dollar short on this, but I actually look at a lot of these across the entire state and just want to make the statement that we can't challenge our designers to do a better job with these gravity riprap, riprap structures. And meaning that there's softer elements that can be incorporated above the bank full elevation. And moving forward, I think we should challenge them on that, especially in Chappy County, especially in our community as we see more hardened features along our river. You know, they're good for recreation, but I believe we should be balancing environment with that as well. Some to be discussing with our design engineers.
Yeah.
Of the projects.
And yeah, we definitely challenge them. We did three different designs to get to where we wanted to be based off of our needs and desires of our community. And we have, you know, some steep sections below and a play feature right above and a play feature right below. So, we tasked them, had them redo the design to match the needs of our community as things were changing. as things were changing engineer and design wise. Um so yeah, we're, we feel like we're there. And it's a blessing in disguise. Had we built this originally in twenty twenty three, I think we've had some some potential challenges with our original design. So I'm glad that we had the two years in place.
So the brown trout are going to be able to get through this one?
Yep. So we actually have to work very closely with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife and build a very specific fish ladder for for the fishery. Um and the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers have to go all through all sorts of environmental reviews. And BMPs to do the separate work in the river.
Thanks.
Now, that's a great question. Thanks. Now, we want to do what's best for our community for sure.
Yeah, I'm ready. I don't read these, so I don't know what to expect. What is it going to look like in low water? So at the lowest of low water, are we going to still see the natural boulders and rocks? Or is it going to look like just a big concrete slab?
So the slab is under the river water, so it blends in. You can't really see it actually colors with time and gets moss growing on it. But the wings will look similar to what you see now at the existing site location, which is just above the Surf Hotel. Um we're going to do the sides in all natural granite boulders. Instead of building really high walls like they did in Salida, we opted to keep our wings low and natural to allow water to run over the river left and the river right to dissipate the energy at the center of the feature. Um so um, yeah.
Even in really low water, it sounds like it does, to me, look like a bunch of rocks.
It'll look like a bunch of rocks. There are going to be, there's uh, they are building curbs at the entry point to help bring the water in in uniform fashion. Those will be underwater most of the year.
Yeah, and the design is in in the packet there. You can see what it.
I know. I just don't know how to read them as well as Chris does. So I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure what it would mean in in real life. Yeah.
Well, it's definitely a huge pro. I know this has been in talks for a long time, ever since it was first built.
And it was cool uh for me personally.
I sat and watched for like two hours the competition on Sunday where they're surfing. So it'll be interesting to see what this will look like in the future. So.
Yeah. And the main shift in whitewater recreation is, you know, everything was built in the days for kayaks to do flips and crazy things. And that industry is still strong, but not nearly as strong as the kids and the young adults and the old adults. They like to boogie board and surf on surfboards and surf on kayaks to do it all. So nature just wasn't producing enough um recreational opportunities to make it. So that was really wanting to fix it.
How much of the money was raised from uh contributions from the public?
Yeah, I believe a hundred and sixty thousand came from the community directly fundraisers and private donations.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not just business, Optimus Clear and other agencies in the town that just love to support kids. There are forms about outdoor rec.
Yeah, that's a great, great contribution by the public.
That's more than pickleball even.
Wow, be close.
Great. Any other?
Questions I can answer?
Earl or Shane? Okay, um is there a motion in regard to resolution number thirty nine?
I'm on.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Sturm and Rustner. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you all very much for pursuing us over all the years.
Thank you for your patience. We hope to have a fun grand opening early October. If anyone out there wants to surf. Fingers crossed.
We'll be here. Okay, I saw you come in. Annie, is this for you?
You have to say your item.
Special event.
Kind of the same thing. I'll start us up and answer questions.
Sorry.
All right. Um so uh I have in my memo here, I've combined um ordinance number five and resolution um number forty, um which is the next item on the agenda. But um for our purposes, they are very much linked together. So um we've had a, essentially we've had a gray area in the special event code for a little while um in confusion between special event business licenses and um special event and vending at special events. Um you know, we were kind of treating those as the same thing, as the same thing. And then um Colorado passed a Senate bill um in two thousand and two, um which kind of changed how town handled their business licenses um and left us um yeah, as a gray area for special event vendors. As we started to dive into the issue, um we also noted that um in our um Unified Development Code, um there is also temporary vendors um such as food trucks, um not associated with special events. And basically, there's um a lot of confusion between business licenses, temporary vendors, and vendors at events. So um really, the purpose of this ordinance and resolution is to clarify that um and to kind of create a new permit um that will go along uh with the special event application process. So the special event uh vendor permit, um we we wrote the code with the goal of trying to operate as we are now, um but really just clarifying the the code and the language around um this situation. So um each vendor um at a special event would pay a fifteen dollar fee and submit their um information, business information to Annie as a um through the event organizer, um which is what they're doing now. And um it will be on the event organizer to to gather that information from all of the vendors present at the event. Um we will also have a little bit of leeway to work with the event organizers. Um you know, vendors aren't the most consistent. You could think you have ten and then fifteen show up. And um so we do have a little bit of leeway to um rectify that after the event uh with the organizer as well. Um so overall, it would be um removing the outdated language um in section uh six thirty of chapter six of the code, uh clarifying section sixteen three, three, four, four, A, um uh to separate event vendors from temporary vendors. Um and then the language to um define special event ordinances would be located in uh chapter eleven, article seven um of the municipal code. Um Jeff also was a great assistance in helping us um dive into this um issue and um try to find a solution. Um if he has anything else to add.
No, I think you covered it. It it was actually pretty confusing. There were a lot of sort of overlapping provisions. And we wanted to simplify it as much as we could. So I I think it actually makes sense now when you read the code. So hopefully it'll simplify the process for parks and rec and everybody issuing special events.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do you want to go on and talk about the other one too, or?
Um and then and then simply the the fee schedule changes um basically removes the um special event business license from the um clerk section of the fee schedule um and clarifies um changes the title to an event vendor permit in the fee schedule. So essentially the same fee, just with a different name.
Okay, so that's that's um ordinance number five. Right?
Correct.
Okay. It's going to feed into the fee schedule.
Yeah, I would probably recommend uh considering ordinance number five and then moving into the fee schedule.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve approve ordinance number five.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got Rustner and Hike. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that uh ordinance has passed. Now we have um a couple of things that are going to hit the fee schedule potentially. So um right, right. Is your part complete right now?
That is everything I have in the fee schedule as well. You discussed it.
Okay, thank you. Vika?
Yes.
You'd like to go ahead?
All right. This is Marika Cock, Planning Director for town. Um the other item on the uh fee schedule adjustment is our parking fee and lieu fee. So two weeks ago, at the session, I presented very preliminarily on this concept, uh which we didn't get to spend a ton of time on, but the recommendation from the Board of Trustees was bring this to P and Z and get their recommendation on the fee, which I did at our last P and Z meeting last Wednesday. Um at that meeting, I went through this presentation, which included three case studies. Uh the property over next to Cool River, um which is currently being used as a parking lot, but is not permitted to be a parking lot. I looked at the value of that property. I spent a lot of time on these three exercises, trying to come up with a draft parking design and squeeze it in there based on a nine by eighteen spot. And if I absolutely jammed in as much parking as I could um across four lots, which I very much undervalued. So the assessor would value these properties at two hundred and eight thousand dollars apiece. We know that two of those properties are currently listed for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I only estimated that they are valued at two hundred thousand dollars. But if we're talking about just the cost of land alone, by getting in as many parking spaces as I could, we were looking at about nineteen thousand dollars per space. And again, that's just for the land alone. So that's not for any improvements related to a parking surface or continued maintenance or enforcement. That's a pretty extreme version of this because obviously a parking lot is not the highest and best use for that property. Um and so we do expect the land to be valued quite high there. Um and so I did look at some other properties, including example number two, which the town has actually looked at, an opportunity to create a parking facility here. And the and the town has gone through an estimate before with a um draft design, which included a hundred and six parking stalls. It was really difficult for me to determine the cost of the land. And Brian might know better or not if we need to consider the cost of land or not within this equation. Um but I looked at six different properties owned by the town or by the school, which are currently vacant. And I looked at their value per square foot, um which ranged from fifteen dollars per square foot up to fifty six dollars per square foot. I took the smallest amount, so fifteen dollars, trying to be super conservative, assuming that for whatever reason, this land would not be highly valued. Uh and so looking at our probable cost for construction of this project back in twenty twenty three, we were looking at a three hundred and forty, forty thousand dollar construction cost. If I'm assuming the cost of the land is fifteen dollars per square feet, which again is that lowest average, the cost of the land is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars just about, which would bring our total to uh, you know, just over a million. That would give us a cost of about ten thousand dollars per space with that land estimate, given I am not a land assessor or realtor. I did want to give everyone the estimate of what it would cost without the land. It's about thirty one hundred dollars per square foot. Um I do want to say that this is twenty twenty three improvements. And so we do expect that the cost of improvements will have increased quite substantially. Um Brian and myself estimated probably around four hundred and fifty thousand, but the feedback we got from some planning and zoning commissioners was uh probably double what the estimate was in twenty twenty three. Um and given that you're looking at maybe up to, you know, over six thousand dollars a square foot just based on the improvements, not looking at the cost of land, or six thousand dollars per space, I'm sorry. And then in the last example, I'm, I looked at the parking lot that we were currently leasing from the school. Again, um I took a picture of it there as the sun was setting, very pretty picture of a parking lot. Um and uh the spaces are not currently delineated. So it's really difficult to determine how many spaces could actually fit in there. But my poorly drawn picture, uh because I couldn't get the lines straight, gives you a good idea of um if we squeeze in as many spots as we could and left twenty foot with drive aisle lanes uh for circulation, we're looking at about ninety five spaces. The valuation of this land, according to the assessor, is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars just about, which gets us a space of a calculation of six thousand, eight hundred and twenty one dollars per space. Again, that's for land only. Um if I started to add in the cost of things like asphalt, we're looking at closer to eight thousand. And again, that's not including labor, striping, engineering cost, um ongoing maintenance. And so we expected the cost to be quite a bit more than that. Not that every parking lot needs to be improved. So then we, I presented a couple of different recommended fee options. And the fee option that we landed on was twelve thousand dollars per space. Again, assuming the cost of all of those things that I've mentioned, uh labor, materials, striping, engineering, uh the cost of land. Really, if the town is collecting a fee for fee and lieu that we're then going to dedicate, allocate to a future public parking resource, this is a much more appropriate uh fee. I recognize that it is ten times the cost of what our current fee and lieu is now. Um I do think that that shows us how undervalued our current fee and lieu is. I do um want to quickly mention that I think that we need a dedicated application for request for fee and lieu. And this will help us ensure that public notice component, um which we've missed with the last three, because it's not currently codified. Um and a couple of other, just like long range items. One of the things that P and Z wanted to discuss was a sliding scale. So the more spaces you ask for, the more expensive the spaces get. So something like zero to five to a one to five space would be five thousand dollars per space. If we're talking about something between five to ten spaces, we're talking about ten thousand dollars per space. And then if you get more of the spaces that you're asking for waiver up, it's fifteen thousand dollars per space. The idea being that the greater the request, the greater the burden that you're putting on on the community to help kind of offset that request. And so that's where that sliding scale comes from. I obviously didn't have the time from last Wednesday to tonight to dive into that, into any great detail. So I did ask the P and Z, should we table this for now? Or do we feel like there's a fee that we can agree on as a kind of, let's see how this goes? And then we'll talk about the sliding scale as we revisit the fee schedule later this fall. And that's where twelve thousand dollars was the fee that was landed on. So I know I flew through that super fast, but um I hope that it gave um kind of a high level picture of what we were looking at. And again, open to continued feedback on that recommended fee, but that is the fee that that was um selected by the P and Z. Yes.
I think that sounds great. Uh just a contextual kind of question is, why didn't they want to go with the fifteen thousand dollar minimum? It sounds like you chose the lowest possible based on your map, which is appropriate. But given that, you know, fees last for a long time, land use prices go up, like why not the higher of the three options?
Ultimately, just because it's such a big jump from twelve hundred uh to twelve thousand. Um what the P and Z felt is that this is an appropriate starting place and will help us continue to have those important conversations. We really think that we're going to narrow in and um probably you'll see an even greater um update come this fall. But this was what we felt was conservatively appropriate at this time.
Can you talk about the recommendation to remove the financial benefit finding?
Yeah. And so the last um finding within the um fee and lieu requirement, you've got those four findings. The last one is that it cannot be for financial benefit. And this is not a part of the the fee schedule discussion, and this would not be amended tonight. But I think it's just long term what we're thinking about. That's a really hard finding to me because I really think that any request could ultimately be tied back to this is a financial benefit. Obviously, the library did an amazing job in in exhausting all of their options and also had a really constrained site. But could someone argue they could buy another site? Yeah, probably. And so I, so the argument could be made, there is a financial benefit. And so I think if there's always an argument that could be made, is it a fair finding to have? I don't know. Um so just continue the conversation around that and maybe helping narrow it down a little bit to something more appropriate.
If I could provide some context, part of uh diving in and including this component is as somebody or a reason, a need arises to open up the fee schedule, we kind of as somebody or a reason, a need arises to open up the fee schedule, we kind of opened that door um across the organization. And so, uh with the change with the uh special event business license, kind of made it where we needed to open it up. So, after the parking discussion, um, at the, at last work session, the idea of at least getting this number to a level as a placeholder, um annually, that'll start in kind of the fall time period. We'll take a deep dive into the fee schedule. And then, um, where's another changes, even just kind of, um, you know, spelling and stuff like that, we'll just wait on those. Um, but after the discussion and after the requests that have come through, it said, okay, let's at least get this to a number that we feel more comfortable with, knowing more conversation needs to be had. Um, so I think this is a good starting point, and P and Z will continue to talk about not just parking fee and lieu, but kind of parking in general, that will come, come back to you guys.
Sounds great.
Yeah, you know, I really appreciate the work you put in, and I can tell this took a lot of work. And uh, I think it really helps s- see an overhaul overall, be what we're looking at. And uh, and so, would this go into effect like thirty days? This fee as, or is this longer, or is it losing, or immediately?
Resolutions immediate.
Okay.
Um, and there's no opinion applications, so.
Yes, yeah.
That's good to know, because if it was thirty days, you might get like, huh.
So, the application would be a part of this, though, because it's a part of the fee schedule. And you've got that all ready and set to go.
Yeah.
Awesome. Good job.
Thank you. You have any uh second thoughts here? No, you started this last time, I think, with your back of the napkin.
Be careful what you wish for. Like, this is not moving at the speed of government. This is like the, the next meeting. That's slightly faster than glacial. You're awesome. Thank you. Um, on three sixty-four, on the packet, the, the last page there, I just have a couple of quick questions. The end of the slideshow. The last four bullets are just a heads up. This is, these are coming. We're gonna update the code to require public notice. We're gonna consider removing financial benefit. We're gonna have them be a credit system. These are all just heads up, just, just basically information only for us. Right now, the only thing we consider is just uh changing the fee and lieu.
Right. I thought it was important that P and Z know that I'm not thinking about this in a vacuum, where this is just changing. But then, we're not thinking of how can we make parking better on the flip side. And so, um, yeah, that, these are more FYI.
This is just the first quick step to at least get us some clo- a bit closer to parity.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any way this particular fee could be tied to like the CPI, just so that it would ratchet with inflation? Cause asphalt costs are not going down and land costs are not going down, and we revisit this once in a blue moon. Some of our fees, we get locked in and never touch them again. I just wonder if this is, this will be one to consider tying it to some inflationary index, so that as the years go by, we're not falling further and further behind.
You all might be able to think about that more in depth, but that was actually a, a question that uh P and Z asked as well. And so, yes, they, that is the plan, as long as we can do that within the fee schedule.
Yeah, so we come back in twenty thirty, go, I mean, this would be great if we could still buy asphalt at twenty twenty-five prices.
Right.
Yeah. No, thank you very much. This is just fast and awesome. So, hey. Uh, that is a motion, if it's appropriate to make a motion. Do it, you know. I, 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 I move that we adopt resolution forty updating the fee schedule for the town of Genuvis.
So, we got Rice and Rosenar. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Nice job, Marika.
Yeah.
Great job. Okay, now we have um zoning and special use permit um for a property that's over on County Road three nineteen. Vika, is this yours?
This is mine.
Yeah, okay. Please go ahead.
All right. You can just go to the next slide. Perfect. All right. We're going to begin this item with my presentation, and then I'm going to pass it on over to the applicant Brent Hall. Um, and then, we will have an opportunity for public comment, trustee questions. And then, we will close the public hearing with an opportunity for trustee discussion and vote. For context, I've got the zoning map over there. To the left, the property, the subject property is zoned P U D. It is the last property of Colorado Center P U D Business Park. Um, so this is kind of a standalone P U D right now, and they are requesting I zoning to be consistent with the surrounding zoning area. So, this is just to the west of the airport and just south of the new uh EMS campus. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing with an opportunity for public comment on the item, to review and make a determination on the rezon request. And um I've note, the subject property is currently not in conformance with the approved civil construction plans and building permit plans. I want to mention that the applicant who currently owns the property, and I believe he just closed on the property a, a couple of weeks ago. Um, he was not the owner of the property that allowed the, the property to fall into default and not meet the civil construction and building permit plans. But he was very much aware that with any future operation, that all of this would need to come into conformance. And he would need to get a certificate of occupancy before his business operation could begin. Quick overview, the property is just about three and a half acres. Again, there is an existing structure on this property, which needs its final certificate of occupancy. So, it made it quite a bit through the process, the building permit process. It was really the final C O inspections that um were never called for. And so, therefore, it was never signed off for its final certificate of occupancy. At planning and zoning last month, the applicant did receive a conditional approval for a special use permit for manufacturing medium or heavy um concrete manufacturing use. The reason that this is conditional is that concrete manufacturing is only permitted in the I zone as a special use. If for whatever reason the rezon is denied, the special use would go away, because the special use would not be permitted under the current P U D zone. Again, this is the last property of the Colorado Center P U D. For those of you that are uh familiar, it was originated in two thousand and six. The town went through a process of rezoning most of the P U D a couple of years ago, but this property owner opted to not participate um for a variety of reasons, mostly personal. I think that they weren't in uh a capacity at that time to work with the town to rezone their property, which is how this ended up as a spot P U D zone. Within that P U D, the property was zoned entry commercial, which allowed for retail services, um, including hotels, restaurants, banks, and other uses. Again, if for whatever reason it didn't rezon, the applicant could not do their concrete manufacturing use. As I mentioned, there are approved site plans uh and uh building permits on this property. What we don't have approval of is that final occupancy. And so, here's the approved site plans. And then, the next slide, you'll see existing conditions. And so, it matches very closely to those approved plans. We're just looking to get it through that final step. The property has also had some code enforcement violations related to uh refuse and rubbish and also having storage of um recreational vehicles. I know that the applicant was making it a priority that as soon as he took ownership, that he was going to get the property in order. He is aware that there can be no outstanding code enforcement violations for a certificate of occupancy to be issued. And he's worked closely with myself, with Grant, with the county for a special inspection to make sure that the site is moving in the right direction. Planning Commission unanimously approved his special use request with the following conditions. Again, the property would have to be rezoned to I, or the uh special use would become null and void. Any outdoor materials must be stored out of the site of public right of way. If not within the structure, they must be behind a fully screened enclosure. And then, the applicant must complete all outstanding site improvements as required by the approved civil construction plans. If for whatever reason, because those were approved quite a few years ago, um, if the applicant wanted to make adjustments to the plans, we would work with him through the appropriate amendment process. When looking at the rezon, there are three criteria that the applicant has to meet, which I know he will go into in detail in his presentation, as to how he needs these. Um, but as the board is making your decision, you look at there is alignment with these criteria. So, the first criteria is that he must meet at least one of the following A through D, and I provided analysis within my staff report. But generally, given that the, the remainder of this property is, the remainder of the adjacent properties are zoned I, and we see some pretty um heavy industrial uses out there. This is an appropriate zone. It's very, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and kind of the overall vision for the type of development adjacent the airport. There have not been significant, uh, there's not been an error in except establishing the zoning, but obviously, there have been significant changes since uh the removal of the Colorado P U D. Looking at number two, the intensity of the development in the new zoning district is not expected to create significantly adverse impacts to the surrounding area. Again, most of the area is zoned I industrial. And though concrete manufacturing requires that special use, because we would expect concrete manufacturing to push a medium-heavy level of industry versus um something that's lighter industry. The applicant will go on um to share that most of the precast concrete manufacturing happens indoors. And so, we have received public comment from an adjacent property owner um who was nervous about potential impacts of such operations, which I think that the applicant spoke too well at P and Z, and he can reiterate tonight. Um, but it did put the, put the neighbor at ease in terms of what the potential impacts could be. And again, with most of that exterior having to be screened with any outdoor storage, I think something that adjacent property owners experience right now is, is the rubbish uh from the previous property owner kind of blowing around. That won't happen anymore. So, that's really great. And then, we do have adequate facilities to service this property. As I mentioned, you've got the approved civil construction plans and building permit. Just need to get it uh safely occupied, but otherwise, this is within our municipal service area. During this process, we have received two letters, and this was prior to the planning and zoning hearing. Um, we received a letter from Deborah, the Director of the E D C, recommending support um and advocating for the project. And then, we also received a letter from Visionary Broadband, explaining that there's some pretty significant infrastructure on this site within a need that that would have to be maintained. Again, um, the representative from Visionary met with Brent and um was very happy with the outcome of that call. I provided the letters within my packet. But he felt that um he could adequately have his infrastructure uh protected and maintained, and he recommended support of the project. As I mentioned, we did receive one public comment at our last hearing, that a neighbor to the south expressing concerns about dust in the operations. Um, but again, uh, that has been addressed. Staff going into this ha- is recommending approval, and Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the rezon request. I think that's all of my slides. So, if there um are any clarifying questions for me at this time, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll pass them on over.
Why is concrete manufacturing considered a special use versus used by right?
And it's really has to do with it's the intensity of concrete manufacturing. And um if it was a really heavy intense use, that's just why we wanna give it special consideration. Um, and it's got that higher level of scrutiny compared to something like a light industrial manufacturing use. I will say, and we had this conversation during our pre-op, was precast concrete appropriately categorized? It did, it, there wasn't a better category that it could uh fit under, because concrete manufacturing can be so intense when precast concrete is not. But that was the use that was most aligned, which is why it required this process.
I have a question. We go through all these calculations with regard to residential use of water.
Yep.
Um, do we have calculations for how much water this, this uh process will use?
Joel, you might know that better than I do, but.
Um, you know, if I, that really would take place during the, like, the building permit process, where we take a look at fixture count and water use. And if it, um, that's when we determine if there is an increase in water use, then we'll, um, depending on the circumstance, but it could be charged per acre, acre foot of additional use, what's allowed right now. I don't know anything about the process, so I can't like speak to.
I just looked at it a little bit, and I, I don't think it uses excessive amounts of water, but um compared to zero that it's been using for the last, you know, ten years.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine there's a restroom and stuff in there existing. But we'll take a look at, at any kind of building permit, change of use. You know, that, at that point is when that analysis takes place.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
Do we have any concerns about uh transport, road, infrastructure, impact of like a heavy manufacturing on that road? Like, it sounds like the airport is unconcerned, but I imagine you need very heavy trucks and a lot of them to transport.
Yeah, that's a good question. And, and the applicant can speak best to the number of truck trips a day. It's not extensive, but it is something that we will review um as part of that building permit process. I can say up to this point, there hasn't been anything that's warranted um additional road improvements. We do expect improvements within their lot um to help support the additional truck traffic, like asphalt approaches versus gravel approaches. But in terms of where you're on street, that hasn't been um completely fleshed out at this point.
This is a different owner than the one two years ago.
Yes.
And someone scolded them for not joining us. Tried to change it. It'll be good to have it all as I wanted, throw it Colorado Center P U D info.
Well, and I like the vertical, kind of a vertical integration with um fading west. Yes, so these will be found in the elements for them.
Nice.
Is that part of the proposal?
What'd you say?
Is that part of the proposal that?
Somewhere I was reading that, yeah.
He, he does um work closely with fading west. And I, I'll say just to have, and, and Deborah spoke to this in her letter, that additional manufacturing and development use here is, is a benefit to the, to the valley in terms of um having access to these, these resources here. And so, um, again, he's gonna work pretty closely, if approved, with A C A. Um, and so, I wouldn't expect the truck traffic to be intense um throughout town, but certainly within this industrial area.
Should create jobs. So, it sounds like it should create eight to ten jobs.
I think I'd just like to echo, because question or concern with just the pavement design for the heavy trucks in that area, that when you ask what, why, why would we wanna consider the concrete use as something separate? I think it's a good question to look to see. Or is the, is the, is the road, is the subgrade of the road uh adequate to handle that traffic over twenty years?
In a portion of three nineteen, recent, recently got repaved as of last year. And so, it is a new section of kind of um, at least for our specs of what we want our road to be. And then, as soon as it hits great drive, you're talking about A C A trucks, you're talking about uh fading west trucks. So, that road is already experiencing similar truck traffic. And so, you're going from a newly laid asphalt, which is meeting our most recent specs, to a road that has a similar impact.
Do we have a different spec for industrial area for different subgrade of pavement thickness?
No.
Is a great question, though.
Other questions? I wasn't regarding this as a public hearing. But should we see if there are questions from the public?
Yeah, let's, um, the applicant's going to present um first, and then um perhaps the public might have questions for the applicant as well.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thanks for having me, Mayor, trustees.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
My name is Brent Mull, and I'm the proud new owner of this property. Marika is doing some hires and mowers, going through everything I need to do over thirty to sixty days to get it in the good graces of the town and the county. Um, I'm also the founder of Peaks Precast. So we are a beta precast concrete company, and right now we're focused on manufacturing a modular precast concrete foundation system. That's going to work great with companies like fading west and all the other home builders in the five surrounding counties. That's going to be our market for this location.
You're not doing specific, specific things.
No. We are focused on structural and architectural elements. We are not in the uh, the civil scope at all. Um, so I think Marika laid out the rezon uh, purpose and how this is the last standing P U D. Um, I did take ownership on May fifth of this property. Uh, part of the purchase agreement with the seller was that I could start the application process. So I wouldn't have to start exactly on May fifth. I was able to start uh, roughly sixty days ago and get to where we are this evening. I did take a little bit of a risk. I did purchase the property without the rezoning, but I felt confident. Um, so I'll go over the criteria. So I do believe that it's consistent with the master plan. That whole area is identified as light industrial. Um, I also believe that this is consistent with the purpose of the zoning district. Um, it's light industrial to allow for the fabrication, assembly, processing, storage, manufacturing of goods and materials. This particular uh, property, it will be closed to the public. It's going to be for the staff and myself. We're anticipating in the first couple of months to have immediately about four to six employees. And over the next twelve to sixteen months, we'll ramp up to ten employees. So I believe the three and a half acre property and the seventy eight hundred square foot steel industrial building really lends itself nicely to what the purpose is of light industrial. Um, and it will also allow me to do what the intended use is there for precast concrete. There is, I believe, four criteria. With the, with flying colors, uh, the fourth is that there was a rezoning error of the criteria of the fourth. Um, happy to go into this a little bit more, but again, Marika did a great job and um, identified the fact that all the surrounding properties are industrial. And this is the last uh, sort of P U D in little green. Um, and then I believe the others are two A and two B. Um, we want to focus on intensity, because this brings up the water and traffic. So first and foremost, Mary, to address your question about the water. I'll be purchasing all the product from A C A, so from their ready mix. So I will not be mixing any concrete at the facility itself for the immediate future. Uh, which sort of was brought to light is this truly concrete manufacturing use. We're not sure, but it makes no sense, and that's what I thought would benefit the purchase of this property. Um, so a, to create my own concrete in a bashing plant where you mix the cement, the aggregates. That's very expensive. It is a lot easier for me just to get a truck from A C A and come over. So um, I really won't be even impacting their business that much. So their trucks are about eight yards of concrete. That's all I need for one day's worth of work, and we'll be doing probably four day shifts. So I'll get four trucks a week from A C A. Um, if anybody is familiar with their business or their property, they are sending out a lot more than four trucks a week. So I won't be taking any additional water than what they're already producing for their own plant. Um, and I do not believe from a traffic standpoint, I'm going to be adding to the burden of this industrial area. Uh, the trucks is going to be underneath C dot, so everything has to be less than thirty eight thousand pounds, I believe it is. Um, the trucks that are going in and out of A C A and the trucks that are going in and out of fading west will many times are over that weight, and they also will be much more frequent than what we plan on doing. I am limited to the building. All the casting will happen inside the building. The building's about a hundred and twenty linear feet. We'll be able to cast two hundred linear feet of precast concrete per day. That's about a house and a half of foundations. If I can do a house and a half foundations a day for five days a week, that's a good business for me. And I don't need to expand and talk about, you know, putting twenty, thirty trucks on the road per day. Um, that's about one to two trucks of concrete coming to the building per day, and one to two trucks of concrete foundations leaving per day. I don't think it's much of an impact to that area compared to what it's already experiencing, so. Last thing I'll mention is, Marika brought up everything that is, I don't want to use the word wrong, but all the issues with the property. Um, I'm happy to say that as of Monday of last week, we got uh, approval to close up the walls by the county. So building inspectors were out there. They inspected all the work that we've done so far. So between May fifth and May, we'll call it twentieth, we did a fair amount of work. And we're in the county's good graces, and we're hanging drywall and painting right now on the inside of the building. We'll be very close to getting all their approvals. And then the outside of the property, um, I wish I brought some photos of where it is today compared to where it was in the beginning of the month. Um, we have moved all the debris and organizes to one area of the site. And it's basically just organized by scrap value, sale value, and trailers. And then additionally, um, we started all the stormwater work. So the rain gardens, the swales, excavation for the culverts. We've been pretty busy since May fifth, so um, I'm confident that in the month of June, we'll probably get that certificate of occupancy. And we will be off to the races, and I'm really excited to open up a business here in this county. I've lived here for five years. I live just over in Pacha.
Um, technically, when you're making a um, pre-stressed concrete like that, when can you move it?
Uh, so it's going to stay for seven days. That's just industry standard to get your seven day break. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable. Uh, they'll be sitting in our casting beds for about eighteen hours before they're stripped and then moved.
Okay, so you can make all of them and not run out of room.
Yeah, there, there's plenty of space, um, and we're only going to make what we need to make. Um, they are rutsome models. Uh, they will be much bigger than these. Um, but this is essentially what it is. This is a foundation unit. Um, they'll be anywhere from four to six feet in height and anywhere from six to sixteen feet in length. Um, and they'll pretty much be custom per project. So they'll get manufactured for project. They'll sit in the yard, in the screened yard for seven days to get our break, our industry standard seven day break, which is just testing the strength of the concrete. And then they'll be put on a truck and shipped to the project site.
It's a question for staff related to your. For a special use permit, say you do decide at some point that the scope of the business should expand. Uh, is there a reexamination of the S U P, given that?
Okay. If the use intensifies, then it will have to go back for special use.
Okay.
Any questions?
Can I use your time to ask a couple of engineering nerd questions? Does the, um, will the concrete trucks stay on site during, for the direction of your pour, or do you just receive and repump?
Uh, so the beauty of this building is that they will drive straight through.
They offload into your equipment and then you receive it?
No, they'll, they'll pour right into the gas.
They just drive right through and pour into the casting beds?
Yep, and then they'll drive right out across the street.
Very nice. Do you, are you, do you do compression testing on site?
We will. It's just part of the A C A requirements, um, but I will also have to find a third party.
Okay, and then, and then when those units get to the site, who sets them? Is that your truck? I mean, do you have a crane truck where you're going to set them, or is that the contractor's responsibility?
I will be a manufacturer only. What I intend on doing is selling directly to earth workers, you know, civil and excavators.
Yeah, yeah.
And provide a additional line of business for them to be able to set these, because they have the machines and the labor to do that. The largest portion or piece is about thirty eight hundred pounds, which can easily get set in place by a midsize excavator.
That's neat. If you offer a tour.
Yeah.
Large opening party.
Yeah, that's really cool.
Do we need a motion?
Or I need a public comment.
Oh, public comment, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so um, is there any comment from the public? That's you guys and anybody who might be in the internet world, maybe just talk. First to Yara Joe. Anybody out there?
Nobody's got their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, and no one's moving out here. Um, so I'll cause public comment. Um, is there further deliberation among the trustees? And is there a motion?
I, I move we adopt ordinance number six.
Who we, sorry, one more. Let's give you nine. Close the public hearing itself and then motion.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Um, now is there further deliberation or, or motion?
I move we adopt ordinance number six, rezoning lot A four from the Colorado Center P U D. Second.
Okay, so we have Rice and Row um, on favor.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay, great. Passes. So.
No reaction.
More work.
Great. Okay, uh, so we'll move on to Sunset Vista Five. You again?
Yes.
Go ahead. Sunset Vista.
So before you, this evening is a phase development improvement agreement. The trustees will have seen this before for Sunset Vista with their master development agreement. A part of that agreement is that we require that with each phase of development, they come back to the town um, with a, a specific phase, and we're looking at phase five here within the subject property. And so the applicant and uh, public works staff are requesting adoption of the resolution forty one series twenty twenty five, which would approve the phase five development improvement agreement. To give some background, and again, this is from the master development agreement requiring the phase agreement. And this phase agreement approach really allows for incremental installation of infrastructure. Given um, how large this subdivision is, that this phase approach is the preferred approach for, for tackling a subdivision of the size and, and tackling the improvements as we move forward through each phase. Staff is recommending approval of the adoption of the phase development agreement. I think that's, that just about covers it. If anyone's got questions on the specifics of the phase development agreement, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, this is fairly straightforward.
Does anyone have questions for planning?
I do.
Okay.
So I guess I'm speaking a little bit more as a, just a member of the public. Okay, sit here.
Yes.
My parents are moving into a house in Sunset Vista, and we're in the process of getting things squared away for them to move in. And I was there over the weekend, and there's a, hesitate to mention this, hopefully it's not too identifiable, but there was a gentleman um, walking up the street pushing an oxygen cart. And he's on the sidewalk, and he got to a vacant lot where there's no sidewalk, and he has to go out in the street. By on earth do we have sidewalks last?
Yeah, that's a really great question. I think it's something that we've learned from the approval of this. I will say that right now with the development of this neighborhood, it's the sidewalks come in, is the building permits come in? And that is not the preferred approach.
It's just not okay. Man, I'm heartbreak seeing the guy walk, you know, and it's like the sidewalk runs out, he's got to get down the street, and it's just like, man, that's who we're here for, not for the neighbor.
Yeah.
And it makes me mad.
No, I, I appreciate that. And, and Brian and I talked about this, if there was an opportunity to potentially revisit some of these things, the master development agreement locks a lot of it in, so it didn't give us a ton of wiggle room, but um, we have learned that lesson, and that is not how we do.
It's not okay.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Other comments, questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, trustee Stern, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Stern and Swish.
Um, can I, can I make a comment before we vote?
You certainly may.
I understand we're totally locked in, and I will vote no as a matter of principle, just as a statement. I understand there's no opportunity to redress this, so I just want to explain my no vote then.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Is anyone opposed?
Nay.
And you made a previous statement about why.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, the motion passes. So.
May I jump in for a second, Mayor?
Please do, Jeff.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess a really good comment about requiring sidewalks first. Um, you know, I mean, the reason why it happens differently is because, you know, the town's trying to balance developers' costs versus, you know, the, the, the need to have connectivity on the sidewalks. And so, I mean, it's just a matter of the town in the future just saying, we're not going to allow this to happen. And um, in future development agreements, we can make sure that we require um, that, you know, sidewalks and there's better connectivity um, in development. So I just didn't want to leave that one hanging.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
I, I have one more point for you too, and Brian knows, um, I'm actually, I have COVID right now. So if you don't mind, I think I'm going to head out. I am like, not feeling great. I tried to hang in there for this whole meeting, so.
Thank you for, thanks for participating.
Absolutely, absolutely. I forgot how little fun this was.
Feel better.
All right, thanks so much.
Trying to follow the law now.
We gave ourselves.
Um, can you have Noel's going to share, can she share a screen? She's logged on. It's the easiest, because then I can kind of, I can do the presentation, but she can move.
And then Michael is also here.
Michael's here to ask Noel.
Where I saw it.
That's true.
You want me to talk before, right?
We're okay to keep going. Okay, uh, we have Gabby, right?
Yep.
That's okay, great, with a draft of the comprehensive plan.
So I know you all spent your Memorial Day weekend reviewing our lengthy draft, so whatever you can get through, we appreciate it. There's still um, time for plenty of comment. It was, it was really interesting to hear a lot of the items tonight, because they just touch on so many parts of the comprehensive plan from um, the rezon to the item we just talked about, to the parking fees, which we actually talked about with our advisory committee a few weeks ago. So it's all coming back around to the comprehensive plan. So tonight, um, our goal is to present an overview of the process that we've conducted over the last little over a year, about the last fifteen months. Um, and then have opportunity for discussion on um, all of the chapters. We had, just to set the stage for that, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the advisory committee. Some of the folks in this room were there, and they gave really great feedback on content and structure, and we've made a lot of those changes already. Um, so this is an amended version from that first round of feedback. Um, and then following this meeting tonight, there'll be about a month-long public comment period with some engagement plan, and we're working with the planning department staff on what that looks like. So let's get started on the um, on the presentation. Noel and Michael, part of the project team, they're on. Tonight, you can see their screen, see they're there. Um, Noel's going to um, go over some of the process and engagement slides um, shortly, and then Michael Yerman is here to answer any questions around um, the housing chapter. We made some kind of last minute edits. We made some kind of last-minute edits to the housing chapter. So he'll be there to talk about maybe some of those edits. And if there's any questions or discussion about the housing recommendations, which is such an important part of the plan, we wanted him to be here to address those directly. So tonight, our goals are to review the planning process, talk about the plan and the format. We particularly want to spend a little bit of time on our future land use map, which is a cornerstone of this project and plan. We'll discuss feedback and then we'll talk about next steps. Next slide. So Noel, do you want to briefly go over the first couple of slides to talk about the engagement process?
Sure, yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is very high-level overview of the process thus far. We began with really on-the-ground in the engagement envisioning to get an understanding of what's happening in Buena Vista, what the important issues are, what we needed to be tackling in this plan. And then we did an inventory and analysis of the existing conditions. So we came back and did a lot of research based on what we had heard from the community and from stakeholders. We, and in that process, started formulating some ideas about what some of our policy recommendations might be. And then we did another round of engagement just a few months ago in March. And this was a survey in an open house to kind of get a pulse on if we were headed in the right direction with where we were thinking policy-wise. And then this last step is actually writing the plan, developing it, and then revising it, which is what we are doing right now. And there is ongoing engagement with our steering committee or advisory committee and planning and zoning. And the target adoption date is June or July of this year, so coming up. So we had a steering committee for this project. And this was a group of volunteer members, there were some town staff, there were stakeholders within the community that we really tried to select volunteers who really reached across the broad sweep of the community and represented as many people as possible. And the role of this committee was to review a lot of the work that we did, the deliverables, make sure that we were headed in the right direction before we brought things to the public or went further. Yeah, reviewing materials and spreading the word about engagement opportunities. We can only do so much from our team, but it's really the staff and our steering committee that got the word out about a lot of our events. And yeah, their job was really to represent the everyday members of the community and their values and concerns. And yes, we also had a client team that provided more in-depth guidance and support. And we meet with the planning department bi-weekly and have for the past almost year now. So for this first open house, this was held almost a year ago in June. And we had this at the community center, you might remember, we had a whole bunch of boards up and asking really big visioning questions of what are the big issues happening in BV? What do we need to think about? And we were able to pull out some major agreements and priorities, as well as highlight things that there was a lot of disagreement or people had a lot of questions about. So some of the major agreements was that the town really needs affordable and attainable housing. There needs to be increased connectivity and safety for bicycles and pedestrians. Recreation and scenic beauty are loved and valued within the community. There is a lot of concern about future water availability and community health is important. And the town needs services and facilities for seniors and youth. So there was a lot of agreement across the board from the over 150 people who attended this open house. Some of the bigger questions that came up were there is growth and development that's happening within the community. And there wasn't a lot of agreement on how fast that's happening, as well as what the role of tourism and the local economy should be. And yeah, to kind of illustrate this, we have a couple of charts here that show we asked people what the town's values were and then also what their strengths were. And so values are things that people care about and strengths are the things that the community does well. And you can see here that access to recreation, open space is the highest for both value and strength, as is scenic beauty. But then there are a couple in here of like historic preservation, sustainability and conservation, a vibrant downtown and diversity and inclusivity that shows that the community really values these things, but they don't see that they were a strength at that point. And we also asked a similar question about challenges and threats. So challenges are something that's happening right now that the community is dealing with. And threats are future challenges that are perceived. And here we can see a lack of affordable housing was the highest challenge, both currently and in the future. But other things like water scarcity is something that people are thinking about right now, but they perceive that and the impacts of climate change as a future threat. So just a small snapshot of some of the things that we saw in that first open house. Then, as I had said, we moved on to our existing conditions research. And the reason that we do this, we like sit at our desks and do a lot of research and looking at data is because it really helps to understand the baseline conditions and trends. And we collected a lot of key information and input from stakeholders and the general public in these open houses. So then we come back and add in more data collection to really fill out that picture. And in here, we were identifying key strengths and weaknesses for different aspects of the community. And we provided a foundation for the recommendations of the plan. And so we did research on each of the following topics. We wrote an existing conditions memo, and all of these are available on our project website as well. And I think they will be included as appendices to the plan. But these were community health and equity, arts, culture, community, climate, environment and hazards, economic development, transportation, recreation and community amenities, housing and land use, water and utilities, community character and design and governance and community services. And each of these memos, we drafted, we reviewed with staff, and then we brought to our steering committee and discussed it with them. And we got lots of great feedback, both from staff and the steering committee, of places that we had missed things in our research and potential places that we should go with our policy and action recommendations. Oh, yes, and so each memo, existing conditions memo includes a contact section, a section on community input, a section that describes what's going well within the community and also what could be improved and potential recommendations. And this really forms the, the background for the plan. And so before we went any further, we wanted to just make sure that everything that we had been doing internally with staff and the steering committee really aligned with what the community wanted. So we had another open house and community survey in March. We really focused on the areas that we had identified in the first open house where we still had questions or there was some contention. So there was a lot of discussion about growth, as well as economic development, the role of tourism, and other questions that we posed where we just needed a little bit more clarity. So a few of the takeaways from that open house was that the majority of community members felt that growth was occurring too fast. We did ask about the positive elements of growth that they had seen, and that includes economic growth, as well as increased diversity, new and improved amenities and entertainment and infrastructure improvements. But we also asked about the concerning elements of growth, and those included rising housing prices and scarcity, strain on existing infrastructure, loss of community character and traffic congestion, and safety concerns. We also asked some about housing. And there was support in both the open house and the community survey for incentives for long-term rentals, followed by requirements for developers to provide affordable housing in larger projects, further limitations on short-term rentals and short-term deed restrictions. You can see the responses here. We have a memo that I believe is on our website that summarizes all of the public engagement here. But this, we really wanted to use this as data to inform the recommendations in this plan. And you can see, yeah, how many, 216 or so people supporting requirements for developers to provide affordable housing. So there are people that support these different things that we have recommended. And this is just a very small, you know, two questions summary of all the engagement that we did in March. But moving forward, we have this overview of our draft plan. Gabby, I don't know if you want to take it away from here?
Yes, I can take it over. So the most important thing to start with is understanding the structure of the plan. We went over a couple of different structural options with the planning department. And then with the advisory committee, we've shifted around a little bit. And part of us is thinking about, you know, some folks, maybe the folks in this room are going to be the ones reading it cover to cover. A lot of people, such as applicants or residents, are going to be, you know, referencing different sections, looking for key words. They're not going to be reading the whole plan. And so we were trying to think about, how do we organize this plan for all those different user types that are going to be using it in slightly different ways? You know, it's interesting, tonight you had an applicant talking about like conforming with the master plan. So applicants are reading this to say, look for support or opposition to their project planning and zoning when they're reviewing criteria. So we really wanted to make it easy to understand from those fronts. But we also wanted to have this arc of the themes and not just have it be super topical, where every single topic is separate and understanding that topics bleed into each other and they overlap and they're all related. And so we kind of, we just tried to strike a balance between all of those different desires in the plan structure. So after the introduction, we have a series of topical chapters that relate back to the collective vision statement, which we did not change very much from the previous planning effort. And so each section of, each paragraph, each couple of sentences from the collective vision statement tee up these chapters. So the first one is land use and community character, then it goes on to community spirit, then transportation and community services, water and environment, economy and housing, recreation and lifestyle, and then implementation. And in, within each chapter, the structure of the chapter is an overarching introduction to the chapter, like I was talking about before, the tie-in to the collective vision statement, a little snapshot of data, like what did the data tell us? So what kinds of trends and things from our research are setting the stage for these recommendations, along with the qualitative side, so what did the community say about this topic, setting the stage for those recommendations, observations of key trend and challenges, and then finally, the recommendations themselves. We really wanted to do two things with the structure. We wanted to tie each chapter and the recommendations back to the vision statement. So it's truly a values-based plan. You can see this is your collective vision in action. And secondarily, we wanted the recommendations to really be tied to both quantitative data and qualitative data. So they're not just coming out of nowhere. We're really showing our work and saying, this is where these are coming from. This is what the community members said in different outreach efforts. And this is what the, you know, demographic trends, economic trends, all the different data is telling us. We really want this to be a well-researched, thoroughly vetted community plan. So that's where the structure came from. Next slide. So the future land use map, is this big enough or do we need to zoom in? I can, for what I'm seeing, I don't know if it's big enough for you. So do you have a paper copy to reference or no?
It's in our packet.
Is there a way to zoom in?
It's on the page somewhere.
At all?
Yes, but even zooming in on my packet, I don't have time.
What's in the packet is different than what you're seeing on the PowerPoint. That's a different presentation. We didn't get this presentation, so you don't have access.
I'll do my best to explain it. I don't know if we can zoom in with the.
I can't zoom in.
Minimize the participant. Oh, there we go, a little bit. If you minimize, where you control. Oh, there we go, that helps a little bit.
Sorry.
So the future land use map is a, is a really important element of a comprehensive plan. And the most important thing to know about it is that it's not a zoning map. It is a vision for the future. It may inform future rezonings. It may inform applicants that are looking to rezone. But it's really an embodiment of what the vision for the community is for different land use types. So to give you a brief overview, the yellow, there's a couple of different yellow colors. They represent different residential, primary residential densities or intensities. The purple is that commercial industrial area. The blue is the downtown corridor. And we have an overlay that talks about connectivity and safety, so that safety focus area. Maggie, you can see we made an addition to the shape to.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
She made a couple of weeks ago about including all of the schools in that key safety area. So before, it's, it's, it was a little bit different shape than it was a couple of weeks ago to include all of the school areas. The Fuchsia Pink is South Main, which we're calling, you know, a new urbanist neighborhood that has kind of different design principles. So we're showing basically the embodiment of what the desired future land use is. So it's a mixture of what's already there now and what recommendations are to change and make upgrades and changes in the future. So I will pause if there were any questions about this particular item. One comment I'll make first is that we used this, you used a funny word, you used a different word. Well, I was using the word spray paint. Like we were intentionally not having it be, you know, clear parcel boundaries. We didn't want people to think of this as like a regulatory tool. So there's blurred edges on purpose to show that these are districts, areas, you know, these aren't, this isn't a regulatory, this is more of a visionary tool. So I can't remember what word you used. Did you use another? I don't know if there's any questions or comments on this particular item before we move forward.
Thank you for changing the shape, Alex.
The high school's a very big blob.
One of the items at P&amp;Z that got brought up is that this doesn't currently incorporate areas outside of BV proper. And if we're talking about annexation and what that looks like as properties adjacent want to come into town, what does that look like? We do have a three-mile plan that helps establish the parameters for those areas. I know that it's not within SE group scope, but if there's an opportunity to, to get some of that information in here or within an additional map, that will be our goal to kind of talk about long-range planning as well.
Yeah, there was, to add on to that, thank you for bringing that up, Marika. The county, is that plan adopted, their land use? Yeah, so the county, while we were, while we have been working on this project, the county adopted a new land use plan and code, which directs a lot of growth to the developed municipalities. So the areas around Buena Vista, Slida, Concha, et cetera. And so although the county, you know, doesn't have jurisdiction over what happens within Buena Vista's borders, it does put a lot of pressure on what's happening just outside the borders, which where a lot of growth tends to happen anyway. And so we've been talking about how to depict that tension or how to think about the three-mile plan, whether that's going to happen right after this plan or whether we're just going to acknowledge existing three-mile plan with this overlay as part of that. So just wanted to give a little more context there, go ahead.
Good question. The hatched area for the safe streets focus area, that was intended to include the schools?
Be correct.
Does that include DPCA school?
That's what I was just looking at.
Oh, do we only include the public schools?
Yeah, I don't think it does.
For that, we'll, we'll add that.
I couldn't tell because they're.
We'll check.
It doesn't look like it does.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments for the future land use map?
Is it like along the highway or does it include like, like it's, it's like the safe streets focus area? Is that, it's hard to tell on this.
Yeah, basically are including the highway corridor, a couple of blocks of West Main, all of East Main, including the St. Routte School on Cedar Street, and then the elementary school, currently we have the elementary. And then the elementary school, currently we have the elementary school and um the middle, combined middle high school. The stars are helpful context for the signalized intersections. We're kind of using the signalized intersections as the northern and southern extent of like the most urbanized um area for um, for that hashed area. Um, there's some other maps when we get to transportation where we talk about um recommended upgrades to where those unsignalized crossing RFB flashing.
Right, and that's where you talk about like safe routes.
Exactly, yeah.
This is different, like we're not telling people to go onto the highway.
Right, this is, this is tricky. We all, we thought about combining like land use and transportation to one map and we realized it was like way, putting way too much on one thing. But I think having the stars as signalized intersections just help um give you a little bit of orientation and context as to like why we chose that hashed area? Because it, you know, it's pretty rural right until you get to that first intersection and it's kind of like boom, you're in the urbanized area. There's expectations to have sidewalks and, you know, safer streets and slower speeds. And so that's kind of why we use that extent as the safety corridor.
And one other comment on that hatch there, the line, the line's probably wide enough on the southwest corner of the main intersection, but that also is to include Linderman with the library.
Okay, and library. We can do that because that tends to be a pretty pedestrian-focused.
Oh, yeah. And it's right across from the park.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Great.
Which I, it, part of that fuzzy line, like it looks like it goes.
But just make sure.
We'll double check to make sure those two uh parcels are included. Okay, well, I think you can zoom out a little bit and move to the next slide.
Oh, man.
Are you stuck now?
Two, four.
Right. We're back.
Okay, so this is where we can have the feedback discussion um around land use and community character chapter. This is a pretty open forum for um what did you like about this chapter, what would you change or what's missing from this chapter? So.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on process. Mary, this is just an intro, right? Where we're going to discuss, give feedback, then the thirty-day window.
Yep. This is not the, this is not, we're like not adopting this tonight. This is the first chance for, and if you didn't get a chance to read all of it, there's still opportunity to give department staff your feedback, email us your feedback. Noel, us updating the website um to have the general public feedback. This is really the beginning of that month-long comment period. Um but as you will be adopting, hopefully, I think we're targeting the July eighth meeting at this point. Um, our goal is to adopt then. It's really important to get as much feedback now rather than wait till the eleventh hour and then make a ton of changes after July.
These are questions we should be thinking as we read because you mischaracterized us. We did have a five hundred and forty-one page.
Right, right. So if you, like, I guess, I don't know, should I ask whether folks read certain chapters? Did they not read the whole thing? Because we can kind of change the gears of this um presentation if folks didn't get a chance to read um all that or parts of it.
I read through it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I didn't prepare questions for it.
Yeah, I didn't really.
I, I have already requested a printed. What? I've already requested a printed copy.
Okay, okay. So maybe rather than go through each chapter, could we just, for those that did get a chance to read it, were just any general comments? Were there like things you liked and didn't like, red flags? Um. I don't have anything.
One thing that jumped out for me, um and I review a lot of these plans just in the, the water space and water planning, is that, you know, we want a lot of multiple objectives. And uh multiple objectives are, are, look really, really good in a plan. Uh and then there's, you know, marrying words and actions. And I've seen in a lot of water-type plans, um like river restoration plans, where we're trying to focus too broadly on achieving every objective. We kind of do them all just okay. Uh and I just, this is more for the, the, the board here and staff is that I think that we're going to have some really tough decisions to make, to think about top priorities. Uh and we're going to be wrangling with that because if we try to satisfy all the objectives, you know, we may implement all of them pretty poorly. But that was just as I was.
Yep, no, that is a classic, classic conundrum of these types of plans. It's a long-range document, so you want to cover everything, but at the same time, unless you're really clear about it, you're. I think throughout our process, the three themes that kept on coming up over and over were housing, water, and safety from a transportation standpoint, uh connectivity and safety. And so we started on the implementation chapter where we've ranked each action with potential like short, medium, long-term costs. But there's an opportunity to have um very clear priorities written in the plan as part of this uh adoption process or final draft. Or another option that other communities I've worked with, they keep the plan how it is. And then every year to two or three years, however often you do your strategic plan or some kind of prioritization exercise, you use the comp plan as a reference guide and you say, okay, we're really going to focus on these three things for the next three years and have that almost be like a separate discussion, but using the research and the actions from the plan. So I think there's options to do that, but I think, thank you for bringing that up. It's a really important um thing to recognize. Any other uh feedback uh that we use from what you've read so far?
I guess I was kind of interested in where the numbers came from towards the end of it, where you're talking about housing. Um, and it says there are fifteen hundred and seventeen homes in Buena Vista. I thought we had been using a bigger number than that for homes. I, I just, I'm not sure where these came from.
Okay, um I might put, oh Noel, do you want to, do you have the answer to that or do you want Team Michael up for that?
I was just going to say that may have been an estimate from the census. Um but if there's a more accurate number that we should be using um from the town, then we can certainly use that.
You think it's too low?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I thought we were using like nineteen hundred homes for, for purposes of our short-term rentals.
Not quite that high, I don't think, but it's close.
Okay, like from the assessor? Does the assessor have better data on that?
Okay. I think maybe.
We have better data on that. Okay, thank you.
Five seventeen.
Yeah, that, that number is from the.
Michael?
That number is from the census.
Okay.
Love being spiced up.
American community, ACS is American census.
It's already five years out of date.
Yeah.
And even like our number of population, I think we have more than a hundred and eighty-eight people over sixty-five in the town of Buena Vista.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And there's.
We did struggle on multiple occasions where we started looking at census data and it didn't, did not seem correct. Yeah. I think especially with small places with small population, the census data tends to have bigger errors. So we will try to get other data sources.
Then on that same page, the median household income is listed as fifty-eight thousand four oh nine. And we keep throwing around that area median, area median income is seventy-two thousand.
Do you think that includes parts outside the town limits?
Mm-hmm.
One thing that's also really tricky is you have a lot of neighborhoods outside of the town limits that are technically in the county. So depending on how you slice the numbers, you can get pretty different um averages.
So we have thirteen hundred ninety-nine residential water taps in about twenty homes on a well, so many homes. That doesn't include other units and secondary, you know, dwelling units. Those are just individual residential property.
Well, we'll follow up with, and figure out the right data source. So thanks, thanks for that.
And um I presume in the twenty twenty-three ACS is the American Community Survey. Would you guys like including like how many data points actually had, actually earned that survey from Buena Vista? Because I understand there's still like, it's on a population basis that maybe like more data comes from our census population.
Right. We did also use some of the state demographer data, which I think she, her department uses a couple of different sources. It tends to be a little bit more reliable because we didn't feel comfortable talking about it on the census.
But some of those things is kind of nice because then we're not questioning the authors. Okay, this is, these are the data sources.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Be nice.
The other thing, Gabby, the other, the other source we should look at is the uh housing needs assessment and see where they are at on those numbers as well.
Okay. Are you talking about the most current housing needs assessment or the twenty twenty-two one?
We looked at the twenty twenty-two one, but Joel expressed some doubts about the validity of some of that data, so we didn't take it too seriously. Is that what you were, which one you're referring to, Michael?
Yeah, I, I think as far as unit counts and uh the ta, and the number of taps, I think we can, we can reference that on that, on that fifteen hundred number. The uh, the one other, the one other key addition though, I would point out, the trustees that uh, that we added, that was, I don't know if the red line made it in, was the defining, the community defined affordable housing at sixty percent AMI for rentals and a hundred percent AMI or less for uh homeownership. So that was added in there and I think that is a really key metric that we heard loud and clear. It's also very much in line with the state's Proposition One Twenty-three AMI limits. Um, there is a petition out there to increase those limits as rural resort communities. But when we did some um steering committee and some other discussions with the community, there was not a lot of appetite to up those AMIs, to higher AMIs, to, to be a little bit more broad based on defining affordable housing. Uh so I think that is a really important metrics that we heard loud and clear through some of the input sessions we had. Uh and so I think that's, that's in, that was updated and included in one of the edits that I did recently.
You have a question about that?
I've not read the fine print. I apologize. I'm guessing.
Okay.
Uh, we didn't use the rural resort community definition within the comp plan, did we?
No, that's a state.
Right. Is that something that we didn't ask or a state just said, this is you? So, okay.
So the state has defined, the state has given every single.
Right.
County municipality, one of three or four different designations because just they wanted to recognize that the housing market is different in different regions and so they're slightly different needs. So they've made rules apply a little bit differently to different designations.
But if our AMI go up instead of, yeah, so as long as.
It's, it's.
Thank you for, yeah, I appreciate it.
I hate being called.
Yeah, I, it's appropriate for what we are, but you have no say.
Uh, in the water and environment section, um I really like the way this is organized, by the way. It is very easy to follow and I agree that people will be able to engage with this easier by jumping to certain sections and jumping into it. I just did that for the water. Big idea number thirteen, increase coordination and collaboration to proactively respond to risks associated with wildfire. I would recommend adding the language and post-wildfire hazards after the word wildfire. Throughout that number thirteen, there's a couple of sub-actions where you could add and post-wildfire hazards afterward.
I like that.
I think that the town itself could experience a lot of problems in a post-wildfire scenario.
With increased runoff and.
Changes in hydrology and debris flows and things of that nature.
Yeah. Water.
On the waterfront, we did coordinate pretty closely with the um water conservation plan project and generalized some of those recommendations and included them. Here, there was also a really good comment from someone on the advisory committee, I can't remember who, about having it not be all about things that you can't or shouldn't do, but having some more positive aspects of things we can do to conserve water or educate or be, you know, they just didn't want it to be like a no, 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 can't do this. So I thought that was good feedback that we uh attempted to coordinate in this draft.
I noticed the swimming pool comes up.
You gotta wreck the pool, always talk about, send them to the pocket wave. Get a wreck center.
That always comes up, but there's, it's, it's just so hard to come up with the money to build the pool, maintain the pool and staff the pool.
And fill the pool.
But it's just always, it's always there.
I like to say I didn't get into planning, talk about grocery stores and swimming pools and all I do is talk about grocery stores and swimming pools. We just sort of work with Crestview and they're having this exact same discussion that they want to have a swimming pool in the north, north at valley and not just having to drive to Gunnison to go swimming. So I, is there, do you have like a specific thing you want to change about the swimming pool? Or just like, it's so, this is such a tough enough to crack up. We want to include it because it's clearly a community desire.
Right.
We've talked about some funding options, but we also don't want to tell you there's only one way to get your swimming pool. There's a lot of different ways to get your swimming pool.
It should be studied or.
Yeah, if people really want it, then they have, really want to pay for it.
Yeah.
And if they want to pay for it, then we need to stop talking about it.
So in the um, if you remember, we presented on the recreation survey, I think in January.
Yeah.
That was a sub-project to this project. Um and we did talk about uh willingness to pay and types of taxes or types of payments people were going to say. And then Noel, remind me, the number one option was lodging tax, is that right?
Yeah.
Um and there is a recent bill, the state, I don't know if you've discussed it as a board. No, Shane?
I, I'm not sure it affects us because I think it's only county. It's.
Oh, it's county, you're correct.
Right.
But if, but if JCP County voted to allow it, would that make, would you be allowed to also vote to change your lodging tax? Or would it only affect unincorporated JV County?
It would cover all of the county, including the town.
Including, okay, but maybe that's an opportunity.
You would not receive the money in the county.
Oh, the county would receive the money. Okay, that's a clarification that's really helpful.
So the county can build a swimming pool.
So the county can build.
I don't want to do that. There you have one.
No, wait, it's.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you know, there was, we talk of special districts and things like that.
Yeah.
And you're, you know, if you want to propose, if we want to propose that a special district or increase the mill or something like that, that will be a similar situation in order to pay for something like that. It's going to be a lot. Millions and millions of dollars and tens of thousands of dollars every year for maintenance and upkeep.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasn't that, wasn't it like thirty thousand a year up in Ludville and they didn't vote to?
Well, the city voted yes and the county voted no, so now we're in a really weird position where we're raising a very small amount of money just within the city to operate a swimming pool that we don't have.
Thousand fewer, you voted to maintain it but not to operate it or something.
Something like that, yes.
Something like that. No renovations, but you can operate.
So we're building a fund to do nothing right now.
Yeah, you can maintain the swimming pool that you don't, you can operate it.
So would you like, how would you like us to talk about the swimming pool differently, I guess is the question.
I don't know if you can. I think it's just, I think it's something that people, people want and they want a wreck center. But, you know, I want a lot of things too, so. I think it's something that should be in here for future, if we find a way.
You could say, rather than saying the plan is largely out of date, say it needs to be updated and, you know, with, with today's, today's costs of operation and, you know, and uh building it.
Okay.
Um, it's a lot to be item.
We have so many, so many ways. Well, first of all, we have swimming pools we can go to here. You know, they're not right here, but they're twenty minutes away. Also, we have other forms of recreation here that, you know, that you don't have in, in a big city.
Mm-hmm.
Go hiking, you know, and.
Right.
Ride your bike or jump in the river.
Pocket wave.
Pocket wave.
Yeah, right. So I think that's something that's an ongoing conversation on, yes, people want it, but are you, if you're not willing to pay for it. are you, if you're not willing to pay for it, maybe you talk about the other opportunities you've had. I think we, someone in, um, the planning department, were, were you guys talking about making sure to list all of the other options available? Wasn't Ally working on something like that?
Yes.
Um, and then, you know, there's for folks that can't afford, you know, a private gym membership or a punch pass to Mount Princeton, you know, there's also an opportunity to have some kind of program or subsidy for lower income people to access these already existing amenities that might just be out of their price point, whereas like if there was a rec center, usually those are priced, those are priced in a way that tend to be more affordable for everyone. So I think that you do have options without building a pool.
Yeah, like there's the bus that goes to the Slida Aquatic Center, but that's only
Kids.
In, for kids in the summer or?
Only for swimming lessons.
Oh, that's right. We could, we could expand some, yeah.
Yeah, so I think you have programmatic options to kind of work with what you have too. So maybe we could, would you like us to mention that as like an alternative?
I don't think, I mean, I would love to see it as an a- and, right. People want a rec center, we don't need to fight people on that. I think, be honest, I think being like, go hike a trail or swim in the river is pretty we have a lot of aging folks, we have a lot of young people, we have not a lot of space for recreation programs for kids like dance or whatever theater, like a rec center is more than just a pool, right? It's a gym, it's a community space, it's indoor space in the winter, it's a place where people who are not as physically able can do things besides hike in the snow or swim in a river. And I just think it's, I, I understand why people are frustrated about it, but I think it's important to acknowledge that it's something our community's been asking for forever. And whether or not they vote to fund it doesn't mean that I think we should ignore the reality that this is like a primary request for a lot of different reasons and not just a pool. But yeah, I think like including some pieces of like, in the short term, we can also subsidize swim lessons, create more busing programs, work with the Slida Pool on their hours, you know, like subsidize space for recreational programs that are inside in community buildings. I think all that kind of stuff could be really beneficial, um, you know, especially for kids and elderly folks who don't have a ton of options right now inside in the winter.
There's also the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, you have to be seen.
As I mentioned in, in this write-up, I don't remember, I don't remember seeing it, but we are supposed to have a relationship with the Boys and Girls Club, which is going to be right out here, just outside the window there. And, you know, we should be able to use their facilities when they are not having programming hours, which is from three until seven every day.
Okay.
So, so we should have access to gyms and, and dance floors and meeting rooms and
And we do, yeah, and we have the magnetic, the get us gym, um, and we have D P C A as well. It, it does mention talking, working with other entities on, yeah, but not necessarily like has a A specific, yeah. Right, but that would be part of the feasibility for a gym is looking at all the resources. Rec center. Yeah. I like the idea of, you know, either it's not building a rec center and a pool or not, it's doing that and or in the meantime be able to fill these needs if, if people want them, because if we start doing a bus every day to the aquatic center, are people going to use it? Is it going to be something that's worth it? Yeah, I guess those are things we have to figure out. Are you getting a call? Do you want that? Do people want that?
Um, I mean, it, it was something, I, I want to say, um, that was brought up here, I want to say Cindy brought it up. The last few times I was here that, you know, expanding options for transportation to our, like, looking into that. You know, so, I, I mean, yeah, it's stuff where we are pursuing and, you know, it's a great thing to have in the plan because you know.
Yeah, one way, that's a goal.
One way to improve it without having to spend ten million dollars.
Yeah, right, you can buy a lot of bus tickets.
Did, did any other comp plans track and look at the demographics on second homeownership? I was talking to some staff from Steamboat Springs recently and they were telling me that they track second homeownership.
There's a couple of different data sources you can use. It also depends on how your assessor tracks data. Um, we're working with Keystone right now and they're like eighty percent second homes and we we're even having a hard time parsing through because we're basically comparing the physical address with the mailing address of the owner to try to see like, is it one of the same, but it's tricky with P O boxes and such, but, um, there's some assumptions that can be made, but it's really hard to know exactly. The reason Steamboat is thinking really seriously about tracking it better is because they're considering a vacancy tax or vacancy fee. So it would be a couple thousand bucks a year if you basically can't prove that you're there over a certain number of days a year.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's kind of the question, right.
Didn't Singer to Krista at the last meeting say there, they have data on electrical usage that the data indicates that forty percent of the homes in their service area are not occupied full-time?
So I think with S T Rs, it's tricky to track because some people might be renting them out part-time and then those people would be using electricity.
Their data tracks that
Their data
Shows this is not a fully, uh, this is not a residence.
There's no way they could be using like that little
Right.
Electricity, so there's Yeah, I think forty percent sounds about right to me. I don't know if we have any better data than what the electric company
That's what the housing authority said three years ago in their presentation.
Well, less, less about the data and more about key challenges associated with it and, you know, I I made it through once, but if I missed something in that regard, I apologize. Uh, but if we don't have anything related to
What do you want to have in the plan that
Trends and challenges, I, I just think understanding our second homeowner population
Okay.
A little bit are better, uh, is going to be pretty critical in getting a lot of things implemented that we want to.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we have to have a, a a more thorough, and maybe not in the comp plan, but at some point the community has to have a discussion between the available housing stock and the need for housing.
Yeah.
And I think if it's not mentioned at all in the comp plan whatsoever, then it almost seemingly doesn't exist to people outside of our community. So I think even just stating in there that the re- most recent estimate is that, but as a challenge, it is, it, it brings up a really good challenge for our community right now is that vacant housing could fill the need for housing. Yeah.
I think you could also put it in the community character is that we're losing neighborhood connectivity
Mm-hmm.
To second homes, yeah, I'm saying
Vacant homes even, yeah.
Yeah, second homes, vacant homes, short-term rentals, like the increase over time of non-full-time housing. Or, you know, buildings not being used, this housing has degraded the character and it's something that we should address. I don't know if it came up enough to say that, but I think it is a challenge that like, that has expanded. We haven't figured out a way to manage it. It's a, it's a threat to the community.
Well, I mean, it ties into our general community character and some of these vision statements that we have, so I mean, these are people that are in the community, granted not all the time, so I, I just, I think it warrants a little more thought. You know, on, on our close-knit community. I mean, we take a lot of pride in that and these are people that are part of that community, but I don't have a very good understanding of what that part of our community looks like.
But for a developer that's looking at building, you know, second homes for a bunch of people sees that it's a challenge that we're facing with vacant homes, they may say, well, may, maybe this isn't and I, yeah, I think it's worthy of a mention.
Yeah, I mean, even in the land use map, I'm not going to make you redraw a year's worth of work, but like, you know, where we do and do not exempt short-term rentals allowances, like there is a lot of town that's exempted, it's almost entirely short-term rentals. Where should we allow that? Or should we not, you know what I mean? Like where do you want to see contiguous neighborhoods protected long-term? I think maybe that could be part of the conversation around the land use map is when we say residential, do we mean residential only or do we mean neighborhoods, you know? I, I would like to see us be more specific about like, community, parts of the community that are neighborhoods versus commercial use in homes.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to continue that conversation. There are a lot of communities around that state that used to be a lot more similar to our community. And if we can learn or we need to, like what they're tracking now, maybe we could have better ideas.
Yeah.
Fulfilling our vision for our community.
I'd love to see what Steamboat and Glenwood Springs and Carbondale are, have written in their comp plans about the challenge that exists now versus what they did or could have done about it, you know what I mean? Or what they're planning to do about it now that we might be able to do in advance, which I know this might be an entirely new section, so I'm so sorry. I think it could be addressed by making sure it's in the right trends and challenges section and maybe adding an action around some of the character concerns you guys talked about. I don't think it's a massive edit, so.
I can help write it. We all can.
This is not, this is not a complant, kind of a just a reminder to us that it's, uh, we really only get one chance to grow well.
Yes.
And it's our job to attend to that while we're here. That, that's not necessarily a comp plan
Yeah.
issue, but that's our job.
That goes back to staffing, yeah.
But hopefully over the next ten years, you use your comp plan to achieve that goal.
Well, right, right. And what do you like to say, Andrew? We're a, uh, we're a small town in the mountains, not a mountain town.
For a town in the mountains.
Town in the mountains, not a mountain town, yeah.
Andrew, I like that.
Say, that's Andrew one.
What else? This is good.
I'm going to throw this one out again, which is to see everybody else's under, and I know, we all know that you did a rec survey with a lot of, so it's a sub project. There's five community feedback parts under the rec, but then there's only four community feedback for all of the other chapters.
Right.
So it just seems very balanced of, uh, community feedback on rec where it almost feels like that's all we talk about here, because nobody else talks about it. So I don't know if it's adding more in other places or maybe I'm just balancing a little bit. Or if I'm the only one that maybe felt that way.
I don't really mind it, only because I think there's specificity. Some of them are more specific, some of them are more broad, you know, under different sections.
And adding a disclaimer like, hey, we also did a rec survey. So we have more data in this than we do for other areas. And I don't know what this solution is, I just wanted to point out that it seemed slightly imbalanced between.
Yep, I remember that comment.
Yeah, I think there are, there are a couple of other things that we can add in, um, for community feedback for the other sections that didn't quite make it into this draft. Um, but we do have that in the back of our heads and I, I have a couple like housing-related um, key facts that I want to add in, so, I hear ya.
And I really wanted you guys to drive it, but when you talk community feedback on the recreation component, one of the second, or the second one as far as forty-three percent response is prioritized, prioritized multi-use pass, it's really gearing towards these shared use pass. And I'm not gathering that from the rec study and survey results and, you know, even here, uh, more on-street bicycle safety infrastructure is forty-seven percent. And so, you know, I don't know, this is gearing it towards those shared use paths and even kind of our development and infrastructure manual has geared a little bit more towards uh, pedestrian sidewalks and bicycle lanes.
Lanes, okay.
Uh, I think there is a time and place for it, but this directs you almost entirely that direction. I'm just calling that out.
Okay, we can take another look at that. The kind of inconsistency between uh, priority, pri- prioritizing on-street versus off-street facilities.
Can I, it's important to recognize too, that rec is the fastest growing section. You know, in the last ten years, went from one employee to many more than one. So, um, you know, in another ten years, it, it might sound like a rec center is totally a normal thing to talk about, so.
I look at it as it would be wonderful to have, but I look at real sense because it is important, but I look at that as when you're faced with infrastructure and the whatever that you're going to the grocery store and giving your family um, donuts and cake and instead of vegetables and beef for dinner. There's, there, there, it's okay to have wants and to have your luxury items, but there also comes a point, this is a small town. And that is our reality. We do not have the same amount of funds that Denver has for rec. And it's, it's, it's a reality. And if you went ahead and bought your built your rec center and got your swimming pool and then our old water main lines all collapsed, but we didn't have money to fix them, you're not going to build a pool anyway. Uh, it's it's learning to live within your means, is. And families that are here that are struggling, um, passing a meal levy to make it harder for them to afford to live here isn't, isn't sound judgment. You know, just it's okay to have wants, but you can't get them all filled.
I like the transportation section. I think that's definitely something needed and we talked, and you talked in about how we haven't done a transportation plan in twenty years, so. Definitely, yeah.
I was even looking at the, um, when you read in the streets gate, what year was that, twenty seventeen, highway twenty-four? The traffic counts, that was built for the pre-Cottonwood Pass, pre Yeah, so even though like theoretically it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, it is outdated because of your visitation growth, population growth and traffic growth, and so it doesn't really work for the amount of cars we have on the road, especially during peak summer season. So even like, it is outdated, even though it's like still in decent shape, which is such a bummer.
Yeah, see that, drop the ball.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, when you do those projects, you're supposed to anticipate some kind of growth projection, so if things aren't outdated the second you build them, but I don't think that project could even have anticipated, like, you know, how the Cottonwood Pass paving would have changed regional travel, you know, so.
Yeah. Futures, I suppose, future stoplights, putting in, it's going to change a lot too. Like that included the actions possibility. On steel.
Very small formatting thing, I was going to email you, I didn't want to forget. On the future land use map, the lights are all marked with a star, which is great. But then on the transportation map, the problem intersections are marked with a
Oh, so it's confusing.
I saw it was a little bit confusing. Maybe make them red stars, I don't know, but.
Got it, so it's just too similar of a symbol.
Yeah, because I just thought, oh wow, we have a lot of lights now, oh wait.
Right, right, okay, that's, that's good.
Frony face.
I think you may have made mention of it somewhere, but, um, I think we need some, um, elderly housing opportunities here.
Mm-hmm. I remember that coming up in some of the focus groups that they were saying they had to move family members pretty far away, like we're visiting was hard to, hard to make happen, so. I'll make sure we can go back through and is there something you want to see specifically about that or just mention that? Priority?
I think we either have to have a, um, big increase in services available to older people to stay in their own homes or some facilities for, um, for people to live. And those things are kind of in the works, but you know, they've been there before too, in the works.
It, I mean, it is a big need. I think our demographics skew a little more to higher than average here because it is a retirement destination. And what happens is a lot of times the people move here and retire and then they age and then their family's not here, but their community is, and it is such a And it is such a massive contributor to your quality of life to be in a community. And when you're parachuted to Texas, because that's where your kid lives, but your entire community's here, you know, that's, I mean, I echo what Livy's saying, that, that is a community need that I don't want to go away.
I'm not sure it's necessarily in BD as much as like county.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something we can talk about in terms of like county partnerships or a broader regional strategy on aging and place and care. But I do find this point.
There is an action item for that. TCS five B facilitated expansion of licensed childcare and early learning facilities. You could add to that.
Okay.
Because it's, the first line is collaborating with Chaffey County.
I'd love to see the water and environment, big idea number seven, built out, no, not seven. There's, it's ten. So in terms of like addressing climate change proactively, we have, there's one bullet point in here, it just says, come up with a plan. I would love for this to have more specific goals about what we could do. You know, there's like nine things we could do on water. I think we have more data, more examples from other communities about what we can do in terms of climate change here, whether it's like work with our, you said, I saw it here, but like solar and wind came up as like a major thing that the community asked for us to work on in terms of with SCCA utilities. And like, what are three or four things we can do? I'd just love to see more information there, the like, the town that's gonna be so impacted. There's a lot of what do we do to, can I bring this, obviously? Like, what do we do to adjust to a world where changes happen? Versus prevent it in the capacity that we can do something proactively about it? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so adaption and.
Yes.
Inigation.
We have a lot of adaption, but I'd love to, adapt, adaptations. But I'd love to see a little more built out in terms of a couple of recommendations or thoughts around where we can make the biggest impact in our tiny community. You know, building codes, utilities, efficiency.
There's some great grants out there for climate action plans too.
Yeah, some, like, I think some of those would be great, and I'm sure we can pull examples.
And they help give you specific.
Even if it's just overlap, like reduce car use by implementing a, like a multimodal transport program. I think there's some overlap, but I'd love to see.
Yeah, okay.
Does some of that bleed more into the prescriptive component, where this is reflection of community input? I mean, I think what me is saying, is this the right place for that? Did that come out of the community survey? Or is that being a bit more prescriptive and preachy?
I mean, community survey said build a pool. So I think we're doing a little bit of both, right? That like, I think it definitely came out that people need to act on climate. There's some data in here that points that. I think it's then our job to say like, okay.
But that survey question didn't give an answer that would allow you to say, this is not a priority for me.
That's true. I mean, I, we did ask.
Yeah, that survey question basically presumed you're on board with that. It did not give the, the responding a chance to say, I have a different opinion.
I mean, sure, we also didn't ask if we wanted people, if, if we wanted them to specifically talk about our water supply and efficiency there, you know what I mean? Like, there's a ton of detail in here that has, that is our recommendation on how we respond to that survey. Do you know what I mean? I think there's a way to talk about a lot of the specific recommendations, whether it was energy, land use, transportation, water, and link them somewhere, maybe in a sidebar, separate action. It's like, these are all contributing toward climate, either adaptation, prevention, et cetera. Because we do have a lot of specifics around, you know, how it manifests in different topic areas. But climate is such an overarching, cross-topical, it touches everything. Touches your vehicle fleet, touches.
Totally.
Your building and efficiency, it touches water, it touches.
Yeah, and if we know people want us back on climate, I think we do know what our biggest sources of climate change are, at least for small towns, right? Like, there's, we know that's utilities and transportation.
Right, a lot, a lot of times buildings too.
That's, that's right.
Building, yeah.
So even just calling that out is like, these are the three focus areas that small towns can really focus on. Who are making gains there?
It's been great, any other comments as folks are kind of flipping through the document?
If we have more comments, who do we send them to?
So we have, do you want to go to the next step slide? That's a little bit in the works. We do have a form on the website for more public, but I think right now, send them to Marika, and then she and I can sift through them. We are planning on having some press to the public. We have, you know, a couple hundred emails of folks that have participated in different events over the last year, so we can tell them like, hey, the plan's ready, please review it. And then we're planning, we're calling it a block party. We'll see what, what it actually ends up being, some kind of, you know, meet people where they are, summer celebration to bring the plan to the people, I suppose. Well, we'll be preparing some summary boards and opportunities for comments. And we'll make sure that gets advertised widely. The town staff has done such a great job with the advertising and press releases and getting things on the website and social media and newspapers for this whole project, so. And then we'll be back here hopefully early July for an official adoption meeting. So the next month really is the last, is any very specific, you know, specific as you want. Don't be apologetic. You hate a section, you hate a sentence, you hate a data point, you love a thing, you want a star changed to a circle. Like, please send it all. Because I want you to be proud of this, and you're gonna be living with this document for a long time.
Say that, but then you're gonna get my handwriting.
I'm, I'll use AI to interpret your handwriting.
It's really good.
I don't know, Marika or Joel, if you have any kind of summary comments you want to make before we end this?
I'll, I'll, I mean, I appreciate all of your, you and SC Group and Michael and Chaney and Noel and Julie, of course, have all done on this. I think it's just one, one thing about the, the water and one comment that we should keep in mind, that we got this DOLA grant for a hundred thousand dollars to help pay for that, half of it. And there specifically, like, we had to include certain elements of water within that. And so, of course, it's important, and I love drinking water. So I'm heavy on water anyway. But there is an other component for the budget.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, there's a specific requirement around that. And the requirements in 2026 are gonna change again for DOLA grant comp plans to have some more specifics around three-mile plans and growth areas and water, so. The rules, the rules just keep changing.
And our plan is to, like Gabby said, bring this to hopefully like the farmers markets and the concerts in the park and things like that, events that are already happening that hopefully we can tag on to, rather than setting up an event that we ask people to come to specifically for providing feedback to the complan. That we get real authentic feedback that way, and meet people where they're at. But if there's an opportunity for some kind of fun party that we can help manage, that would be the goal as well, but definitely meeting people where they're at. And yeah, thank you for all this work. And I know, just talking to Maggie just before the meeting, like the jump even from what this document was from the steering committee, which was not that long ago. I don't know, less than a month ago, to what it is now is huge, and so it's just becoming more and more real. So I, I really sincerely appreciate everybody's work and feedback. It means a lot.
That's incredible with this one.
That's great, no, this has been, I mean, I live just up in Lyndale, so it's been super cool too. I mean, I spend a lot of time down here, my kids went to preschool at Shining Mountain for two years. This definitely feels like home away from home, so it's been a pleasure to work with you all and and be a part of this process.
Thank you, it's a beautiful product.
Well, my staff is responsible for the visuals, I'm not a graphic designer by any means. I will pass those compliments a lot.
Thank you for having a good staff.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much. I'll let you close up your meeting. Thank you, see you back soon.
Thanks, Joel, thanks for my work.
The last thing is trustee staff interaction. I have a couple of things. One is that this year in particular, we need to be as careful as we possibly can be about wildfire. And, you know, the, the staff that's out there watching wildfires has come way down. And it's a responsibility we need to take on. And we thought that it would be worthwhile all to pursue some official training again of us from maybe Rich or somebody for evacuation plans and, you know, wildfire. Just what do we do if we're in that situation? So, I talked to Brian about it a little bit, and so maybe he can come up with some recommendations of, of how we can get better informed. Because, you know, everybody should have a plan with all their loved ones of how are you gonna get back together? So there's that. And then Monarch Mountain is building, you know, they're building out a fifty percent increase in their, in their terrain. They'd like to have somebody from the town come and, and, would you like to go?
I don't know, what am I doing?
Yeah, go hike around.
Yeah, I'd go up there. Well, I, I've had a season pass there every year, several years.
They're having something on June third, I'm gonna be out of town.
Yeah, I might go. I don't think I'm doing anything. Yeah, just sending the info, I have a dentist exam at ten-thirty. Is it after that?
Probably, probably in the afternoon.
All right, four to six.
Four to six.
Four to six, cool.
Okay, good. All right, so you got anything else?
Um, yeah, I was saying, me and, and the mayor and Andrew and I, I don't know if that's proper grammar, but we went to the roundtable with the county. Was it last week? I think it was last week, with the Forest Service and BLM, talking a lot about forest fire and staffing. And, you know, some of the things that I took away from it is that, you know, if currently it's not abnormally dry, it's not like danger, dangers, super drought. It's, it is dry. And, you know, there's definitely a decrease in moisture. They were saying on the east side from Buffalo Peaks down to Potapaxy, and that the Forest Service was saying that the staffing is pretty normal for the fire organization. I know you said the opposite, but they were talking about that.
I was late.
Oh, you were late, you missed? Yeah, yeah, so they were saying that, that their staff pretty well, and Kira was there as well. I don't know if you want to add any other tidbits from that discussion?
Not as much as they ever have been.
Right.
Or usually, I mean, at least what's called a mod, which is people, and then an engine. They are based out of Solida. The BLM, which is basically like four mile, they don't have, and they never really have had anybody to patrol. So the Forest Service patrols and helps with any like lightning strikes or unintended campfires and things like that that are reported in BLM. So the Forest Service helps partner with that particular area. But they've saved hired all the seasonal positions that they've ever had. So the staffing levels are the same for the forest this year.
Not that the levels were ever amazing.
It's that.
But yeah, it was a good, interesting discussion to be a part of, and definitely everyone is thinking about it, so. That's all I got.
Okay, Maggie?
Nothing, just big shout out to Marika and the complan and the whole planning department, everybody that's been a process. It, it's exciting to have seen it at the packet. Thank you. That's it.
Cindy?
Gentleman is still in the audience, the Reach AirMed. In the last five years, my family has used that twice. My father and my brother. And great, great service for our community, and they have saved many lives. And I'm not being critical or hateful, but five years ago, my dad's trip was sixty-five thousand dollars. I don't think people realize how much that costs to have that available to you. And if they can offer a benefit to the town employees that isn't very expensive with budget coming in, I think it is well worth to check into that as a benefit for the town employees.
You have something now.
We have something in place, yeah. We used to use their service about five years ago, and we switched to a different provider to provide a little more flexibility in the options. So we evaluate that every year as part of our benefits package. I think almost all of our employees sign up for that service, because it is really important to figure out how you're gonna get out of this area to the front range. But also, people that work here, live here, don't just recreate and, and live here, they also do that across the state, across the country. So we consider not just this area, but where that service can be of value outside of this area as well, so.
Good, I'm glad that they have something, because it's a good presentation. That's all I got.
Okay, Marika?
I know that it was a long meeting, but just a quick reminder of I know it would mean a lot to HPC if you've just got a couple of minutes. More importantly, I would like to introduce my newest team member, Carly, along with us.
You can do that first next time.
You don't take up the whole thing, and that this was, she elected to do it, but.
I wanted to watch the complan section.
Privating.
But we're super excited to have Carly on our team. I've heard that Kira can't come look at our office right now, because the amount of decorations that I hunted for Carly might not be to fire go. We are very excited to have her and to be fully staffed, and she has hit the ground running. So just feeling really great about the future, and super excited to have you here. So happy that you all get to meet her, and I promise not to have her sit through these meetings if she doesn't have to. Happy that you'd like to be engaged.
Love it, Carly.
Audit's passed. Yeah, I, I don't know, but in that huge packet you've got, you saw the sales tax report, but March took a bit of a dive, and so brought us back to a flat year-to-date situation, so. Budget will be interesting.
It'll be different, yeah.
Yeah, so, but now that audit's out of the way, we can start in on that process.
You're supposed to make that sound fun.
Yeah.
He's excited, he gets the audit half the year, the other half is his budget.
It is six months.
That's an addition on my side that can't wait until the next meeting. Paul and I will take home the department head's work session at the next meeting. And so, yeah, I'll have dedicated thirty minutes to have with you guys.
I don't have anything.
Joel?
I was hoping to add some things, but I don't.
Great job on Paddle Fest.
Everything's good.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the support for the airport and getting this project on its way, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Shane?
Only thing, Billy Cordova Memorial Park, we're getting very close, substantial completion block this Friday. After that, we will be. After that, we will be able to finalize our planting day and grand opening. So um we'll be ready for those invites coming soon.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for our final?
To make a motion to.
Second?